Alright, good morning, everybody. It's a beautiful day in Santa Rosa County. Thank the Lord. Today is Tuesday, January 22, 2013, 9 o'clock. And thank you for coming to the commission meeting this morning. We've got quite an agenda today, so we'll go ahead and get started. And I'll turn it over now to Commissioner Don Salter for Economic Development.
Mr. Chairman, you want to approve the agenda first?
I move for approval of the agenda and ask, I'll start to my right to see if there's any add-ons.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I do have a couple of add-ons that we'll get to. It'll be item number 11, 11 under Administrative Committee. It'll be discussion of a resolution on our Second Amendment rights. Mr. Melvin?
No change, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Linter?
No change, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Administrator, anything?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As I forwarded out an email to you, we've got Michael Walther with Coastal Tech here regarding the, kind of the initiation of the Navarre Beach Renourishment processes. We need to get started. It's a long one, as you know, and we need to get them started. He'll make a presentation. If you could add that on to the administrative.
Okay, we'll add that down here as item number... Well, I'm thinking Michael might need to get in and out, so... Should we do it as 12 or should we bump it in there somewhere?
Let's just go ahead and do it at 12. I mean, you've got a number of other folks here, too.
Alright, it'll be number 12. Okay, anything else? Mr. Salter, thanks for the reminder. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, under Economic Development, I have two items. First is discussion of satisfaction of mortgage agreement with Pierce Hardy Limited Partnership, also known as 84 Lumber, for a property located in Santa Rosa Industrial Park. And I will briefly read that resolution. Satisfaction of mortgage. This document is executed by Santa Rosa County, a political subdivision of the state of Florida. The owner and holder of the mortgage executed by Pierce Hardy Limited Partnership, a Pennsylvania Limited Partnership, on November 3, 2003, and recorded on November 10, 2003, at OR Book 2225, page 1288, of the public records of Santa Rosa County, Florida. The mortgage secures a promissory note from mortgager to mortgagee in the principal amount of $335,400 and zero dollars, and encumbers the property prescribed in the mortgage. Mortgagee hereby acknowledges full payment of the debt secured by the mortgage, and promissory note by this instrument. She write cancel the above described mortgage and promissory note. Basically, this says that at one time, we had a mortgage with this group, and they have met, fulfill all the obligations of that mortgage. We need to take action on this today because there's some other business pending on this location. If anybody has any questions, we have Shannon Ogletree with us, county attorney's been involved in it. She has reviewed it, she has blessed it, so we need to take action today. Anyone have any questions? Hearing none, I will move approval of the satisfaction of that mortgage without objection.
There are no objections, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number two, discussion of appointment of Sharling Knight, representing school district member of Workforce Escrow Incorporated Board of Directors. Cheryl Smith did hold this position, but she retired, so at this time, I would ask to move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Salter. Alright, now we'll move into the Administrative Committee. Item number one, we've got quite a few speakers lined up for us to answer some questions. It's discussion of bids for construction of covered arena at the East Milton Park. We've vented this several times. There was some questions other board members had before we moved forward with this, and at this time, I'd like to call Kyle Hawley to present those answers to the questions.
Good morning, Commissioners. We did listen very closely to the questions that you had asked us the last time, and so we prepared a PowerPoint presentation. We'd like to move through it relatively quickly. So this is a discussion of a District Two recreational project, this covered arena. There is some question about what it ultimately should be named, but as far as what it is, it's a covered ag-type pavilion, a covered arena. Mission statement: Provide a centrally-located, multi-use recreational facility to host wide variety of large-scale outdoor events. So this is the concept drawing from which we have been working. You'll see in the background there, and we need to stop at this point and tell you thank you for recognizing that the Santa Rosa County Fair Association has worked very hard over the last few years to change its reputation and expand its capacity, and so we're very thankful that you decided to lease to them that, the property that you see in the background of the photograph. Location on the site shows where the covered arena would be. Next slide, please. Alright, so project planning and development. The inception was 2003. There was an interruption because of hurricane recovery. Back in 2003, District Two began to hold back some of its recreational funds to accrue the money for the project, then re-engaged, the project re-engaged 2007. We went through research and outreach to different groups in '07 and '09. We received technical assistance from a wide variety of folks, and then we came to the commission in 2010 with a master plan. At that time, there was a commissioner who had a very specific opinion about management of the project, and we'll talk about that in just a little bit later. And then in 2011, we had some additional coaching from another commissioner, and so we continued to work through that. So then in 2011, we were able to get a site evaluation done, and in 2012, Architectural Services and the bid package, which is the item on today's agenda. So moving forward, then I... So why? So that we talked about a need established in 2003, and then the intent would be to increase tourism-type traffic throughout the off-seasons. You'll see that the majority of the events, special events, that would be there tend to be in the springtime and in the fall time. So that was consistent with the goal to expand shoulder season that I think the county really sees and its tourism development sees. Supplement existing recreational infrastructure. It made sense to put it in a place that was, could use more usage, to take advantage of the dollars that were already spent that were there. And of course, the project seeks to leverage I-10, Highway 90 and 87, highlighting the main north-south commerce corridor, which also is the gateway from the beach area to our outdoor recreation in the central or northern portion of the county. Of course, an entire project goal was to retain local recreational dollars. You will see that many of the expected users travel regularly out of the area to spend money, and we would like to see some of those events occur here as a way of retaining some of those dollars. The security of covered arena empowers existing events to, and incubates new ones. If you have event promoters who are protected by that covering, they're more likely to take a chance or take on the risk of having a specialment in our county. And so, regionally, the perspective was to provide a less expensive facility to hold local and regional events. You'll see us comment on that a little later. So the main question that this project has had to work with is how is it both like an equestrian center, as well as how is it dissimilar from one? So we thought we better address that early on in the presentation. So when we look at the facility to the west of us, that's the Escambia County Equestrian Center, and we look at the facility to the east of us, the Okaloosa County facility, similar facility referred to as the Baker Arena, you see major scale differences. The Escambia County Equestrian Center sits on 178 acres, has 292 stalls, 65 RV hookups, it's managed by one full-time employee, plus support from five other county employees. So its overhead is very high. Of course, total capital outlay was at least $7 million, and it does operate at a loss and is having some troubles. Alright, the Okaloosa County Baker Arena is a smaller size, but still a considerably larger-sized site than what we're proposing in Santa Rosa County today. So that property sits on a 50-acre site, 216 stalls. It's managed by a Board of Trustees and volunteers. Its project cost was around $3 million. It has been covering its operating costs, plus some of the costs of improvements. However, it is subsidized by its, I would say subsidized by its local commission. They pay the power bill. Does not have an advertising budget. So moving to the next slide, you'll see that in Santa Rosa County, we're proposing a smaller site. It's less than 10 acres there, a lower total capital cost, very minimal daily operating costs. There's no heating and air conditioning associated with the building, really, at all. So then, of course, it's designed with a wider range of multiple uses. The portability of fixtures, when we interviewed within 200 miles, similar facilities and management teams, they all felt like they had built themselves into corners by adding permanent bleachers and things of that nature. It did not allow them to do anything other than what you'll find on their schedules of events. Within that same 200-mile radius, we found that this location had the best access to Interstate 10, and we think one of the assets is that this group, this project, through its planning and design, and through the technical assistance we've received from various agencies, has built a network of vested agency representatives that tend to be a little bit more stronger than what we find in similar facilities management teams. And then this project has dedicated private marketing dollars focused on radio. Over the course of the project, we have found a person who would like to pay for radio to promote the facility as a whole. It doesn't make sense to build a facility and then not let anyone know that it's out there. That's something that's very different from similar projects. And there also is a private capital that would like to purchase the liability insurance to create an event incentive plan to help minimize the risk for any new events that would occur. So the next slide, please. Overall design competitive advantages versus similar facilities. Designed with a full-length vent, this came really from the architect himself. One of the things we heard is that some of these covered arenas, if people extend the walls down, they can become hot boxes. And so the architect did a great job of venting the project, the full length of the building to reduce power costs. Additionally, that vent also provided for a maximized use of natural light. Given the site location, that was also something that came from the architect, and we think makes a lot of sense. There are some facilities who have to run the lights during the daytime. I believe there's a place in Andalusia that's like that. So of course, we see an advantage as well, the all-portable fixtures, no indirect daily utility expense. This building, you can just turn off. Easiest access to I-10. Site location is on a flat space with plenty of parking. That is a major advantage to the project that sits to the east of us, that they sit on a slope and have very limited parking, and we expect lower user fees. So what we did here is we tried to give you a demonstration or an articulation of what we would consider base users. So rather than give you a total projection of all of the possibilities to include calls we receive from event promoters, there's no guarantee on that. We thought it would be much more prudent to bring to you base users. So certainly, it's no surprise that the base users are likely to be ag-oriented groups or outdoor recreation groups. So you see there, total number of users, $6,300. We expect, the project planning team estimates $1.50 per user as a fee, which should ensure that the rental fees or user fees are lower than similar projects within the region. So we took expenses from Baker because we felt like Baker's Arena was the one that more closely reflected this project. And so it looks like their expenses are $500 a month. So we showed that there. And so we think with existing base revenue, the project would cover its costs and maybe have a little layer extra for either cash incentives for other events, or to be, that could be seen as capital recovery. We would need your specific coaching on what to do with that revenue. Next slide, please. Management options. These are the five management options that the project team considered. Number one is to put the project out for RFP for management. Number two, to utilize the Santa Rosa County's Chamber of Foundation with a subcommittee. Number three, in the very beginning, our recommendation was to use the Fair Association, but the commission in 2010 was uncomfortable with that, so we went in a different direction. The fourth option is for administrative services to continue to do the scheduling, and the fifth option would be for the Santa Rosa County Extension to continue, you know, to do scheduling. We would absolutely need this current commission's coaching or guidance or recommendation on which one of these they prefer. The only thing we always talk about is whichever management group you go on to choose, please make sure that you are maximizing the private donor's willingness to contribute. We have seen in a county next door that a sizable gift made years ago did not survive, and so there's a question of the intent for, associated with a Langley Bill Center. So whatever you choose here, please make sure that the donors can give their money and feel like that money would go to the project without any waste. This is the architectural rendering of the covered building. These are the project supporters. Underlying support factors based on that base revenue. So we provided some national statistics, state statistics, and localized statistics associated with the impacts, economic impacts of the expected user groups, and then we extended that. So this slide, I would like to spend just a little bit of time on, in particular, the last three points. 64% of the equine owners are middle-class taxpayers with incomes, household incomes from $25,000 up to $100,000. Future land use in Santa Rosa County is likely to sustain large lot lifestyles, if for no other reason due to the military mission. We need some open space there. We see that changing in Escambia County, we see that changing in Okaloosa County. We think in Santa Rosa County, because of the military presence, that lifestyle will stay here. And then land use conversion rates from ag to residential occurs at a higher rate in other parts of the state. Central Florida and South Florida are converting their rates. So additional usages is the last slide we wanted to leave the project with, and I do thank you for all this time. So we just provided you with a list of other alternative usages over and above what we have presented to you and described as the base, base user and events. I can take any questions or, or not?
We have some other presenters, Kyle?
I think there's some other people who have comments, yes?
Let's, let's get, maybe the comments they have might answer some questions, and then we'll, we'll go back.
Whichever you see fit. I really would like to see other people spend, have the time.
Sure. If that's alright with the board, let's do that. Alright. In the audience today, we have Larry Newsom, who's the Assistant County Administrator from Escambia County, and several comments have been made about, you know, the finance and the way, the direction of Escambia County's gone. Larry also, not only being an employee of Escambia County, is a lifelong resident of our county. So Larry was kind enough to put in some time today to come over here and answer some of those questions, and Larry, if you would, I'll give you the floor.
Push your button, get your speaker up there. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. What we'd like to do is basically, we're not here to support or not support what you're asking for in Santa Rosa County or looking at, but to offer some clarity on where we're going as far as what our question center has done in the past and what we expect it to do in the future. And, and you're right, the Equestrian Center right now, we subsidize it, and we subsidize it probably about an additional $150,000. It's around a $300,000, $350,000 operation. We have a lot of employees. We also pay most employees out of our local ops and sales tax, which I know is not a convenience here in Santa Rosa County at this point in time. We did build a facility that we knew we were going to have to subsidize. One thing we have right now with the Equestrian Center, and we brought in a new manager, I'm sure you read about that a lot in the paper, but we have a manager out there. We've implemented corporate sponsorship. And one thing about that, because you can only do so much in weekends, there is an advantage potentially for us if you have another facility within the area, because we have to take care of a lot of the smaller events, just like what was displayed on the screen. We have a big facility, but we are obligated, as the commission is obligated, to take care of the smaller groups that function in Escambia County. Now, do they fill up the whole Equestrian Center and they bring in maximizing our revenues? No, they don't. Potentially, and I say potentially, if we had another place for them to go, would it help? So we don't see a center across the bay being a threat to our operation. Potentially, it could help us out, you know, if we look at it that way. Now, of course, it's all about whether the people from Escambia want to come over here, if it exists. But what I brought Michael, Michael is our Parks and Recs Director. What he'd like to do is just kind of go into some things, because one thing we look at too, I mean, we may carry $150,000 subsidy, but we have mandated our new manager to do one thing within 12 months of being hired, and that's making their salary up. Okay, the only way you can do that is either increase the event activity on the facility or you're going to have to use corporate sponsorship. So in June, our county attorney's office worked with us to develop an ordinance to allow us to do corporate sponsorships, because again, there's only so many good, good weekends and good weeks that you can do this. So that, we're hoping it's going to help make up some of that loss that we're taking. I use the term loss because, again, when it comes to Parks and Rec, we all know, and God knows, I've had to manage budgets for the county, is you have certain things you're always going to subsidize. And Parks and Recs, you know, whether it's the Equestrian Center, whether it's Ashton Rosenham, whether it's John Aron Jones Park, we subsidize them. It's something we have, we have to do for the people of Escambia County, for the youth, just like we do with the community centers, just like we do with transit. We all know, we subsidize that about 3.9 million. So again, our goal is to try to get as close to even as possible. We think we have the ability with this center that we operate. Michael?
I'd like to just reiterate some of the stuff that Larry said and hit a few bullet points. Again, as the Parks and Recreation Director, I envision this Santa Rosa facility as a potential positive for our situation at Escambia County. We host approximately 35 to 40 events a year, and as Larry stated, there's only so many good dates for horse events or dog events, because quite honestly, our facility is not, it's covered, but it's not air-conditioned, and there's not a lot of folks who want to have horse events in the middle of June, July, August. So those 35 or 40 events are pretty much targeted around eight to nine months a year. Some of our smaller events, which, as Larry stated, we have to stay loyal to, be it rodeos, dog shows, or smaller hot horse, horse events, we would like the opportunity to work with Santa Rosa County and, of course, trying to move some of our events to free up some of our prime dates that we are obligated to for some of our larger events. And again, I hit on rodeos, possibly festivals, expos, and so forth. As the gentleman stated, we do have four outdoor rings, 178 acres, 60-plus RV sites. As you can see, our facility is built more for large, large events, but we do have to accommodate the smaller ones and stay loyal as well. As Larry said, we're in a, in a marketing sponsorship phase right now, where we are trying our best to push the facility and sell corporate sponsorships to close that gap. But I don't want to lose the fact that the, the economic impact that just one of these type larger events brings. Right now, we're hosting a three-week show that's bringing in over $5 million of direct economic impact. Those are not phony numbers. I understand they don't go directly to our budget, but again, the restaurant owners and business owners in Escambia County and, and quite honestly, Santa Rosa County possibly as well, they don't lose track of that. And these aren't phony numbers. These are tracked by the Pensacola Sports Association, that I believe works with the Santa Rosa County as well, to track soccer events, softball events at the Santa Rosa Sports Complex, the softball and baseball fields. So these are actual numbers. The formulas are adopted by the Florida State Sports Foundation to track hotel nights and what folks spend while they're in town. Again, the three-week event we're having right now, which will enter its third week, is going to generate over $5 million of economic impact. Can I say that every event is like that? Absolutely not. But as Mr. Newsom points out, we have to stay loyal to our local folks that have used us from day one, be it in the rodeo sector, the dog, dog programs, our dog lessons. We want to stay loyal to them, but the opportunity to partner with Santa Rosa County brings a unique opportunity to maybe free up some of our dates. And of course, Santa Rosa County may get in the situation as well, where they have this type of situation, where they have conflicting dates, and we would hope that Santa Rosa County would work with us to bring those events to us, should that opportunity come. That's it. Again, I view this as a positive, certainly. As Larry said, we do subsidize the facility, but in the Parks and Rec world, we feel this is a very worthwhile investment over time, and we're tracking up, not down.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else that'd like to speak before I open the floor to questions from the board?
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Richard Lewis. I live at 4629 Church Street in Baghdad, and I'm here representing the Baghdad Waterfront Florida Partnership. First of all, we'd like to state as a matter of principle, we applaud the recent actions of the county commission in developing parks and recreation for all of Santa Rosa County. We firmly believe that this adds enormously to the quality of life. If you'll allow me, I'd like to read a brief statement drafted by the Waterfront in support of the covered arena. After reviewing carefully the issue, Baghdad Waterfront Florida Partnership wishes to express its support for the proposed East Milton Covered Arena, still we presume to be properly named, currently under consideration for, by the Santa Rosa County Commission. We believe such a facility would not only greatly, be of great utility to the people of East Milton, but also all of the people in Santa Rosa County, and indeed, many of the people in Northwest Florida and elsewhere, as it would provide a wonderful venue for all types of agricultural pursuits, such as horse and cattle events, as aforementioned, other similar livestock and farming activities, including contests and competitions for, for other parts of similar livestock and farming activities. It would support our vigorous agricultural community. It also provides an ideal location for arts and cultural events, such as religious organizations, dramatic and musical performances, family reunions and gatherings, clubs and organizational meetings. Indeed, the list goes on, likely beyond what we might now imagine. We also believe it will benefit Santa Rosa County financially, as persons coming to the covered arena are liable. Covered Arena are likely to utilize restaurants, shops and businesses, various services, fuel stations, hotels and motels, as well as other businesses, thereby contributing greatly to both the economic and tax base. The opportunity for increased tourism seems highly probable, and the general benefit to all of great proportion. Confident that you will examine the issue from every vantage point and conduct careful considerations, we wish to be of any assistance as you deliberate this important measure. Thank you for your careful attention to this, as well as other matters. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Richard. We also have John Atkins and Mike Donahoe from the County Extension Service, and they've been talking to farmers in the area and stuff about this project. John, you have a few comments?
Good morning. I'll make this brief. I think y'all all know that our...
John, give me your name and address real quick.
Excuse me. John Atkins, Santa Rosa County Extension, 3399 Highway 4.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Anyway, our County Extension Service does work directly with several organizations and very directly with our production agriculture people in the county, which includes the adults and the youth. Several of the educational programs we have, this facility would only complement some of the mission that we do through the University of Florida, be it youth livestock programs, adult livestock programs, trade-type shows with agriculture. So the Extension Service could use such a facility to increase their programming in the county.
Thank you. Right, any others? Yes, ma'am.
Loretta Aiken, 1828 Sundown Drive, Navarre, Florida. The one issue I did not hear brought up, as a Realtor, it's very dear to my heart to sell real estate. And people who come and visit our community because of this arena may fall in love, like I did, with Santa Rosa County and want to buy a house and live here. So that helps your tax base also.
Thank you. Morning.
Good morning. Patricia Williamson from 7223 Navarre Parkway, Navarre. I do live in Navarre. I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. We live in Navarre and we love the beaches there, but we really honestly spend most of our recreation time in the north end of the county. We love camping, kayaking, horseback riding. I don't see this as a north-south issue so much, it's just an excellent resource for the county as a whole. It's actually very centrally located in Santa Rosa County, and I think it'd be an excellent resource for the entire county. The other point I wanted to make is, I do see this as a recreational facility. It seems to be held to a different standard than our ballparks and all of our other community services that we have. It's not really supposed to be seen as a profit center so much as just a resource for the county to use. I think it has great potential for some really good economic impact for the area, but it still is a recreational facility for the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning.
Morning, Commissioners. I'm Joe Guillory, General Manager at the Holiday Inn Express at 8510 Keyshawn Taylor Drive. And I just want to talk about how great this would be a benefit to the local hotels in the area, because over the last few years, our hotel in particular, has been sustaining business. However, our sister property and also the two other hotels on the I-10 corridor have been at a loss. It's been kind of detrimental based on the BP oil spill that hurt tourism so much when I first came onboard a few years ago. But even still, the growth has been so slow that there hasn't been enough of a boost in local activities to increase the business enough to make it a profitable exit for us. The consistent growth of pace has taken all of the business towards the Pensacola area, and thus, we've actually lost contracts to Pensacola Hotels, because there's so much more growth and things to do over there. And I feel that it would be a great asset for us to start having growth in the east end of the county and help develop some restaurants and other businesses that would go along with supporting multi-use facilities such as this.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Joe. Morning, Vernon.
Morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Vernon Compton, 5149 Santa Rosa Street in Milton. As Chair of the Santa Rosa County Tourism Development Council, I just wanted to speak with you a little bit about the reasons the Tourism Council has supported this project. You're all very much aware that tourism is one of the leading economic drivers in Santa Rosa County. And the Tourism Council has been working for years to basically market and emphasize areas of strength that we have, like Navarre Beach, Blackwater River State Forest, and Historic Milton in Baghdad. But over the last several years, we've heard from your leadership that it's very important to diversify what we do, considering the economy in Santa Rosa County. And we really took that to heart also with tourism in Santa Rosa County. We've emphasized additional items over the last several years, including Gulf Islands National Seashore, you know, some of our other streams, like the zoo, wetting facilities in this county, our golf courses, and then some of the newer items on the south end and the north end. One just recently that you approved is the Baghdad Millsite Park, and finally getting those exciting facilities up and started. But we really see this Covered Arena as something that hits to the heart of some other streams that we have. One of those is agrotourism and the agricultural community that others have already mentioned. It also is one of the leading economic drivers of this county, and we see the opportunity to do more and more agricultural-related tourism events, particularly tied to this facility. The other that is very different from other arenas in our surrounding counties is, this facility is very in close proximity to the largest state forest in Florida, Blackwater River State Forest. And it's not disconnected through a project that you have supported, the Old Spanish Trail, the Old Brick Road, that goes right by this facility and ultimately connects to Blackwater River State Forest. A very large network of trail systems has been developed over the last five years, and we see this as a perfect fit to tie this Covered Arena into those other facilities or streams that we have here in Santa Rosa County. So we see a lot of the things that you have supported over the last decade has sort of been building toward growing this area as a tourism benefit for Santa Rosa County. So what does that mean to us? Because of all those smart things that we've been doing in Santa Rosa County, our percentage of bed tax collections has been growing faster than the surrounding counties, and we see that as a really good thing for Santa Rosa County. We feel like this facility is going to help us do that even more, because of all the things that the other speakers have brought forward. And that's why we're asking your support for this project, and why the Tourism Development Council is asking your support of $200,000 from the tourism general revenue to support this project. So thank you in considering this.
Anybody else before I open up the floor? And to clarify Vernon's last comment before I open it, District Two will be building this facility entirely out of District Two Recreation Funds. Any addition to, as Vernon mentioned, the TDC money, if that should be applied to this, would be applied through comments from TDC and needs of the facility for only amenities, not for construction. Okay, I'll now open the floor to comments and questions. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Milton.
I'd like to ask Mr. Newsom, and/or Mike, whoever the appropriate person to field a question is. From the business aspects, a wonderful concept, but one of the things that I haven't heard nailed down yet is insurance. How much insurance does it take? How much does it cost you? Kyle alluded to a private donor covering the insurance, which would be sort of iffy. We wouldn't, assuming that everything else fell into place, the insurance would be a real, that would be a business decision-making point for me. How much liability? How do you protect Escambia County from being the deep pocket? Because Santa Rosa County taxpayers couldn't afford, if something really traumatic happened, we would be the deep pocket that the guys would be looking towards. So how do you cover that? How do you handle that liability?
Yes, sir. Our risk management department has implemented in our facility use agreement, each user that uses that facility, be it nonprofit or for-profit, doesn't matter, must provide a million dollars of general liability and name Escambia County as additional insured. And every time an event comes in, they have to get that into us one week prior to the event, that their certificate of insurance goes to our risk management department, to the director himself, in which he checks off and gives us the okay. And by no means, if they can't provide that additional insurance to us, that's the stipulation in our facility use agreement.
So we need to, we all need to take note of that and be sure that before we're finished with this project, we have that addressed and how it's going to be handled, who's going to be responsible for it, who's going to pay for it?
And Commissioners...
What's that going to cost? Because that's a very big point.
Yes. Our user groups that rent the facility, they know that going in, it's posted on our website. Again, it's built into the facility use agreement. And again, that's just part of their budget, they must build into their facility use.
And I see that as, you know, just like the management agreement, how we make a final decision on a management agreement, we'd certainly count on Ms. Jones to, our county attorney, to work, you know, with similar agreements to protect the county. I equate it to any of the facilities we have now, soccer, baseball, whatever. We're at a liability, and as Ms. Jones has informed me, anybody could sue anybody over the drop of a hat. So our protection comes through our county attorney and looking at other solutions, just like you've addressed.
Yes, Mr. Cole, you're exactly right. We have the same setup at our softball facility, soccer facility for outside user groups, be it University of West Florida, NCAA, or other nonprofits that rent our soccer, softball facilities, it's the same type agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Milton.
Along the insurance line, do we have any ideas to what the structural replacement insurance would cost us yearly? That's another cost that's, we're going to have to address. I know we're self-insured, but we still have costs there that are involved, and I was wondering if this has been taken into consideration?
I wouldn't think, Mike, you'd have an answer to that.
I'm not asking you to answer that. I'm just throwing that out from the board. You know, what kind of monies are we looking at there? That should go into the yearly cost or the monthly cost that we're going to have to pay or the taxpayers are going to have to pay.
We can quantify that for you. And just to clarify, I mean, we've got the same policy as Escambia County does, as far as when you rent one of our community centers or the auditorium is, we get the million dollars in the naming the insured. I mean, it's, our risk manager checks on that. But we can check on the specific business with the building.
And about that one million, that's not really a lot of money when it comes to liability. You know, I think a lot of folks that are in business, you know, they have umbrella policy to cover higher limits, and this is something that the county, if they do this, might need to entertain also.
Okay. And I think these, again, like the management agreement, are things that we can work out during construction. Commissioner Williamson, I'd ask how, I guess, consideration, like if we had a hurricane or something like that that took the roof off the building, that type of reconstruction insurance?
Well, yeah, that's any type of, if it, you know, if it fell down or blowed over or whatever, blowed away, you know, what the replacement cost, what type, I mean, how much is that, but the structural part of it going to cost us, just the building itself?
Just so we feel a little better and the citizens feel better, Steve Jernigan from Bay Designs in the audience, and Steve, could you come forward, please? Steve has the specifications for wind load and wind shear on the building, and really, the facility's not going to flood, we know that. I think the only hazard we, it's not going to burn, it's an all steel building, so I think the only hazard we would have, Steve, would be wind, and could you address that for us?
Yes, sir. Steve Jernigan, Bay Design Associate, 720 Bayfront Parkway, Pensacola. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, as we've discussed, the building is designed to the latest wind codes with the, the brand-new Florida wind loads are related to the use of the facility as well as the wind zone. In fact, we're designed for 150 miles an hour wind load on this building. Not only that, the building, as he mentioned too, it is all a non-combust, you know, non-combustible structure, all steel, but we do have a fire sprinkler system, so that if any content, anything, you know, inside the, in the building were to catch fire, we do have a fire suppression system, so, but from a wind load and from a fire protection system, it's, it's very, very well protected.
And that pertains to hurricanes? But we have a thing around here called tornadoes, and wind load doesn't mean anything to that.
Yeah, well, you know, obviously tornadoes are, and in some of the new wind codes, that's taken into account, because we don't get 150 mile an hour straight-line winds in a, in a hurricane, so that the research that they've done, that's one of the reasons they've bumped those loads up over the years, to get it up to a higher wind load because of those tornadoes often that are spun off of a hurricane.
And I understand what you're saying, but my main question still is, what is the cost to the taxpayer, or is the insurance part nothing to do with the wind load?
Thank you, Steve. Okay, any other questions? All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Solomon.
I don't, I don't remember when we first started talking about this project, but it's been a long time. Over the last week or two, I'm not sure if there's anybody in the room I haven't heard from. Numerous emails and phone calls. Along the way, I had questions about the management group, how would it be managed? Who'd be responsible for it? Would the usage justify the cost? And then, can Commissioner Cole pay for it, since it is in his district and we always pay for our own recreational projects? So I think most of my questions have been answered. I know I heard a lot over the last week or two from the agricultural community up in the north end of the county, as far as agricultural activities, livestock shows, for each kid usage, those types of things. So I think most of my questions have been satisfied, so I'm going to support the project, and I just hope it does everything that it's supposed to do.
Thank you.
Commissioner Milton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had some of those same concerns. Ongoing expenses, hopefully we can get the, get the insurance figure nailed down. Primary concern for me was whether or not it was going to be able to be funded completely out of your recreational dollars. I know you've been setting that money aside for a number of years. This project's been in the works for a long time, and it will benefit a significant segment of our population, so. That being said, I'll support this. I would like to see those numbers up before we're done.
With that effect, my feelings are, and I appreciate the comments, any other comments? My feelings are that, you know, we've vented this quite a bit. I feel pretty certain in insurance, with having heard from the architect and knowing that it's structurally built for today's standards, that it wouldn't be a burden to insure. I mean, we build buildings all over the county, that we, you know, quite frankly, as it was stated, this isn't a profit center, although we're trying to, trying to keep the burden off the taxpayer by all the comments that were made into facilities usage. I've always said that the facility, if you come to me and say, hey, I want to have a Boy Scout jamboree this weekend, we're going to have 500 scouts out there, we're going to put on a good jamboree, that all you pay this Santa Rosa County for use as a nonprofit would be the electric bill and make sure it's clean when you leave. Now, you're somebody that comes in here and says, hey, we're going to throw the Dodge Rodeo of the century, we're going to have a Hoot Nanny out there that's going to bring in 3,000 or 4,000 people, and we're going to make some dollars off this thing, and you're going to pay the power bill, you're going to pay for cleanup, and you're going to put a percentage of that gate back into that District Two Recreation Fund. And I've been clear on that all the way along. I think we can do it. And then, nobody has mentioned the fact that it's close... we can do it. And then, nobody has mentioned the fact that it's close proximity to I-10, the exit right there, and its use through emergency services as a staging area. I talked to Robin Ponco from Gulf Power. During Ivan, and I didn't know this, but during Ivan, Gulf Power actually had to stage in Birmingham for, for effectiveness here on the Gulf Coast. So, staging area, a distribution for, uh, ice and water. Uh, again, it was designed so we can get semi trucks under it. So, trying as a board to be good stewards of your tax dollars, all these things went into play. Again, I feel the insurance will be something we can overcome, really not overcome, it's just something that's, it's part of daily life. You know, we, we all have insurance on our homes and businesses and it's, it's part of what we accept. And I would like today, uh, to go ahead, since we got these citizens here, and I don't want them to have to come back on Thursday, and this has been vented several times, I'd like today to go ahead and call the vote and ask that a fellow commissioner's vote in support of this covered arena.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have an, uh, while we have the owners of one of these facilities with us, uh, Mr. Newsom, uh, do, what do you do with the excess liability? If you require, uh, someone that's bringing an event to put up a million dollars, that, that, uh, what do you do with the excess liability? Do you own that yourself or do you sell that to an insurance company? How do you handle the excess?
Commissioner, I don't have that answer.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do. I can, I can check with Amy and with our risk management and give back to you if, if that's a concern. I know we haven't had a claim, a major claim against the center, but you know, like you say, we can always be sued with government.
It only takes one to generate thirty-five, forty million dollar claim. If you have a one million dollar policy, who's gonna own the rest of that liability? And that's what, uh, you know, as prudent businessmen and stewards of the tax dollar, we need to understand we've got our arms around. Just wanna be sure we've worked our way through that. So, I know Kyle's still here and, uh, Vern's still here and a lot of the other people working the issue. That's a concern that we need to be sure that we have our arms around.
Uh, Commissioner Melvin, today's question is whether or not we vote today to move forward on construction. Management agreement, insurances, all that, I think, could be addressed, uh, while the construction's going on and certainly before the facility's open, uh, answered by our county attorney, suggested to, you know, how we protect the citizens. If not, are we gonna close the current, uh, equestrian facilities? Are we gonna close our soccer parks? Because it's, it's a question of anything. If there's negligence involved or possibility, possibility of each one of us being sued. So, they're, they're good questions, but today's question, all I'm asking for is to be able to move forward with construction prior to, uh, our bid expiring. And again, I'm gonna call the question, I'm gonna move that we award the bid to AE New, uh, through total District Two Recreation Funds for payment, and I do so without objection. All right, I'll call the vote. I forget what we're supposed to do. I don't see a screen here.
Maybe.
There we go.
All right, thank you. If you please vote. All right. The vote passes three to two with Commissioner Cole, Salder, and Lynch supporting it. Commissioner Melvin and Williamson, negative.
And Mr. Chairman.
I thank you.
My vote is based on the ability to answer the insurance.
Commissioner, I haven't recognized you at this point. Thank you. There's a couple of other things, housekeeping items I'd like to take care of before we have any other comments. There's been a lot of confusion about what this thing's called. Equestrian Center, Covered Arena, General Purpose Arena. So, at this time, I make a motion that the confusion be over and the name of this will be the June Eights Arena. And I do so without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Final comments on this particular subject is when we cut the ribbon on it, I want us to have a gospel ribbon cutting with our sheriff's posse coming in at first, the pledge of allegiance to our country, and then our community pastors and groups come out there and let's just open this place upright and dedicate it to our Lord. And I do so without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Take a ten-minute recess.
We lost one of our commissioners, I think he'll be back in here in just a moment. We're gonna go ahead, I would like for something I found out during recess from Jason Kimbrel on June eights, hopefully it'll make a couple of my commissioners feel a little more comfortable. Equine activity is protected by Florida State Legislature, so we'll look more into that. Ms. Jones, well, Ms. Jones, when Ms. Jones gets back, I'll ask her to, you know, maybe pull up that law and find a little more information on it. So, again, thank everybody for their support on that and looking forward to opening day. Item number two on our agenda today is discussion of proposals for use and management of the Navarre Community Center. We've discussed this several times. We asked the two groups to go back, see what kind of arrangements could be made at this time. I'll ask Board if there's any other questions they have, and since Neighbor is the current occupant of that building, I'll ask somebody from Neighbor to come up and give us a briefing on where we might have gone with those negotiations.
My name is Bob Hartley, and I'm with the Navarre Area Board of Realtors, and this is Angela Campbell, she's the Association Executive. In keeping with what the county had asked us to do at the previous meeting, we had a meeting with the Board, and we subsequently had a meeting with the Garden Club. And what we came to believe on our part was, we made a proposal to the Garden Club, believing initially that it would solve the needs of what the county wanted and what we could effectively, believing we could do. So in that meeting, what we offered to them was the effective use of the building for meetings, and allow them to store some material they needed, i.e. not plants, not fertilizers, etc., but for use of the building. Subsequently, they don't think that meets their needs. So what they need, or believe they need, is use of the office on a continuous basis. Effectively, the way it's set up, we don't see how we can do that, so I think we came to an agreement to disagree. What we believe is the partnership between the Board and the county's been a good one for the citizens and the taxpayers of Santa Rosa County. We also agree that's been good for us as a Board. We have maintained the building at no cost to the taxpayers of the county, and we've made the building, as you're well aware, available to the county at any time they needed for meetings or whatever they dictated. We've also maintained insurance on it, and we've made improvements to the building. We think that's been a subsequent good thing for the citizens and the taxpayers, but it's also been good for us. And while we do that, we're asking to renew our lease on the building for at least one more year, believing that that's in the best interest of us and the citizens and the taxpayers of Santa Rosa County.
Thank you. If you will, take a seat for a moment, and for somebody here representing the Garden Club, if they'd like, if they have a spokesman, please come forward.
My name's Ginger Isley, I'm the president of the Navarre Garden Club. When we were here before, the commissioners asked us to do a couple of things. Firstly, to present a business plan, and we did that and distributed it to all the commissioners so that you have that business plan. You had two areas of concern that you asked us about at the time. One was whether the Garden Club could afford to, you know, to carry the community center if in fact there were no income, and we presented you with our financial statements, so you can see that we can. The second was whether volunteer labor could cover the community center, as Neighbor has been covering it. And those of you who know Navarre know that half of Navarre runs on volunteer labor. For instance, a large part of the chamber, all of the senior center, CERT, the crew of jesters and their Mardi Gras parade and such, AARP with their tax aides and their driver training, the libraries largely has volunteer people who do a lot of the work there, the hospitals have volunteers who help there, the Butterfly House is 100% volunteer, the visitor's center is largely covered by volunteers, and the Youth Sports Association is largely volunteers. And I don't know of any of those ever having been canceled for lack of volunteer coverage. So I think that with our 80 members, we would have no problem covering the community center. The second thing that you asked us to do was to get together with Neighbor to see if we could work out some kind of a sharing arrangement, and from the copies of the emails, that we've made sure that you got copies of all of the emails between the two organizations, you know that we presented two proposals that the Garden Club could work with, either with Neighbor continuing to manage and us just using the one office that they currently use to store their office supplies, and the meeting space once, or several times a month on average, and some of the outside space for plant storage. The other one was if we were to take over management, that Neighbor would continue to use the space they currently use, with the exception of that storage closet, and meetings, preferential treatment on meetings whenever they wanted it. Neighbor did not seem to feel that either one of those was workable, because they need all the space, all the permanent space, but they would allow us to store some stuff in what they referred to as extensive storage space. What we don't understand is if they have extensive storage space, why do they need that extra office to store their office supplies? Why could they not let the Garden Club use that? At this point, it seems that we're at an impasse as far as that's concerned, because, like I say, they feel they need all of the permanent space, and basically, we need a permanent space, even if it's just that little back room that's being used for storage. And of course, we wanted to use the outside space for plant storage and that sort of thing. And I think, basically, that's what I had to say. I feel that the Navarre Garden Club could better serve the Navarre community, because we have closer ties with all the nonprofits. Neighbor has been in the building for four years now. I don't think they've done anything wrong. I think they've done a good job of managing it, I just think it's time for a change. The building was built for community usage, and I think that having the nonprofits and the citizens of Navarre being able to use it considerably more, rather than an organization that caters to a for-profit industry. And that's pretty much what I had to say.
Thank you. Any other comments from either side? If not, I'd like to open the Florida Board to ask questions of either side.
I would like, with your permission, to address a couple of issues she said.
All right. Let's see, let's see if the Board has some questions for either side, and then we'll come back to you after that.
You want to come back to it then, or you want to do it now?
No, let's, let's let the Board, we've got some Board questions, and then we'll come back.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williamson.
This is a community center, it's Navarre Community Center, and personally, I don't think that any organization or club should be housed in this facility. I think it should be used for the community itself, it's just like any other community center. We have, the county runs that, sets the fees, collects the fees, and I think that the county should take this community center back and run it, just like we do the rest of the community centers. We only have one community center that is not run by the county, and that's Shamukla Community Center, and it's run by the Athletic Association there, and the monies that they collect goes back into the athletic program in Shamukla, and I don't see anything wrong with that at all, because the county helps finance that anyway. So, and it's nothing against the Neighbor or the Garden Club, I think they both do a great service to the community, it's just I think that with the Neighbor, I think this was supposed to be a temporary facility that's got to be their home, and I think that they have the means to get out and have a building on their own, and I would be willing to work out some type of arrangement to give them time to do that, I think that would be the fair thing to do. Also, I think it would be fair with the Garden Club to work something out with them so that they could use the main meeting room for their monthly meetings or whatever, and do that by letting them furnish some type of in-kind service, whatever, it may be something that we could work out between both parties. But I think this is what needs to be done. This is a community center, it shouldn't be for any, like I say, any club or any group to monopolize or to have their offices there, and that's just my opinion, and thank you.
Okay. Other comments, please. Questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Melvin.
I thank Commissioner Williamson for those comments, they're right on point. Community centers should be a focus of unity in the community and shouldn't generate controversy. This is not much of a controversy, but it has all the potential to blossom into one. I think that Commissioner Williamson's suggestion is an excellent one, and I appreciate it.
Okay. Other comments? My feeling at this time is that there's been a great job done by Neighbor over the last few years, and we look at our community center, and we keep the power on, we keep the air conditioning running, this time of year maybe a little bit of heat, and nobody's in them. This community center is occupied, so therefore it's not a waste of energy to keep it climate-controlled and nobody be inside them. So, I support Neighbor staying in the facility, but what I'd like to do, since you guys couldn't come to, come to an impasse, could come to an impasse, couldn't straighten things out, I'd like to get the floor plan and have it available before we vote Thursday, or even if I have time, come down there, because if there's an office area that you guys are using just for storage, I may be inclined to help you all come to a suggestion on, and get with Garden Club on a few meeting dates, and work with Neighbor and say, okay, you know, you're using it for storage, but, you know, we can store things in other locations. How often does the Garden Club meet? How often do you need it? When do you need an office? How often do you need to meet? If somebody from the Garden Club can answer that for me, please, come up, come back up to the podium, please. I need you to podium, podium, please.
We have one major meeting a month, but that probably would not even be held there. What we were more interested in is all of our smaller meetings, which are probably like three probably a month.
Okay. If you could provide me, before Thursday, this Board, a schedule of, say, events. Outdoor storage, I don't see a problem working with Neighbor on outdoor storage for plants, because I don't think you guys, Neighbor, are using the outdoors. If there's a vacant facility in there, then I think, you know, as a Board, we should identify that, once I have your schedule, or this Board has your schedule, to see, you know, when you need the facility, and we lay out a course of action. So my motion is going to be that we move to Thursday to renew the agreement with Neighbor on the community center, and let's do that instead of a year, let's go ahead and do it for a two-year term, that this Board identify underutilized areas of the building, and fit those areas into your schedule as a Garden Club for usage. And I see that the only way to overcome this. I've got two great groups in Navarre that I'm working with here. Commissioner for that district has, you know, has, I mean, we all, we're very blessed in Santa Rosa County to have, you know, a real estate group that works so tightly knit, a Garden Club that works so tightly knit. It's unfortunate that there's not another facility that you could occupy, but if there's underutilized space in this facility, then I don't see any reason why this Board can't lay out a course of action. Neighbor's done a good job, I think they have more of the where-for-all to maintain the building and keep it open 24, you know, during the day. You don't have a need to be there on a daily basis, and it would put, you know, it's going to put a burden on volunteers to be there daily. So let's, let's lay it out that way. Let's let Neighbor continue to occupy the building, and we'll, we'll figure out, we'll get past the impasse as a Board.
Okay.
Okay? And that's going to be my motion on Thursday, and I'll open comments. Commissioner Melvin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to echo some of the comments you made. Neighbor, I think, has been a good tenant for the past several years. I do think it was a temporary arrangement at the outset. I agree with Commissioner Williamson. Long-term, we have to be thinking about taking a different approach, because the community center is just that, and the county's, I don't think, in the business of entering into long-term agreements with, with people for, or entities for use of county facilities. I think Commissioner Williamson put forth a good option, I think Commissioner Cole put forth a good option. You know, another option would be, at some point, to determine whether or not the county still needs the community center down there, because we have the visitor's center that has been constructed. So this could be declared surplus, sold, and the money rolled back into Commissioner Melvin's district for other projects, additions to the visitor's center, something along those lines. I think we have options, but one option is standing pat, keeping the Board of Realtors in there, because they've been a good tenant for the past few years.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Melvin?
Thank you, Commissioner Lynch. Willing to discuss this, there's quite a bit of sentiment, even though there's not a lot of others from the community of Navarre. General consensus that I've been able to derive from the general folks in Navarre at large is, they don't want to see this get to be a fight, and they don't want to, they want it turned back over to the county. That's their wishes. I wouldn't support a two-year agreement, I would support some sort of an equitable exit plan, but I would not support a two-year agreement. This is a community center, it's not supposed to be the controversial center, it's supposed to be a community center. Commissioner Lynch's explanation is excellent, and I would like just to leave it as it is, bring it back for Thursday, and let's discuss whether or not this is actually, could be considered surplus and put back in on the tax rolls and sold into private hands, if, you know, the highest and best bidder. If we could work out an agreement with the tourist development center and the Navarre Chamber of Commerce, I would be very amenable to that. I'm not, the community of Navarre is not interested in a two-year contract, they want their community center back.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead, then I'll make my comment.
Okay. Loretta?
Loretta Aiken, 1-828-SUNDOWN-DRIVE-NAVARRE. I have a couple of questions. I heard you say, let them use the large meeting room for free a couple of times a month. I had to pay to use the meeting room when I held the Wounded Warrior Project. I know the building very well, I have been there when people come in to rent the large room, and they do an outstanding job of service. How do, I mean, I don't care what you do with it, but I do know, are they going to split the toilet paper and the paper towels and all? Is the Garden Club going to pay for half of those and half the utilities? And, you know, there's some other issues to address. But they've done an outstanding job, I know that others want to use that facility. One of the things I thought of is, they need a place to put their plants, and they want a little meeting room. Is the backyard big enough to put a little building back there or something? And then they pay to use the meeting room, just as every other citizen has to do.
Ms. Chairman, since she mentioned something, I said, I want to make sure that you mentioned it right. I said some in-kind service, that's not for free, that's a trade-out, if something we were able to work out for them to use to do it, so that's not getting it for free. But basically, the reason I think it needs to be taken back by the county and run, just like any other community center is, so that we take care of what the expenses are, we set the rates and charge it, and anybody in the community can use it, it's not a certain group that's running it, it's the whole community being able to use it, and by paying whatever the fees are, which are fair according to the ones that we're charging in Baghdad, and pays, because they get a lot of usage.
Well, I do have a question, though, and I'll have to direct it, I guess, to county administrator. Have we ever had a complaint from a group that Neighbor would not just tell no?
Yeah, not, not to my knowledge, I don't remember a particular complaint.
All right. So they've been amenable to whoever comes along, Loretta, whoever, at a reasonable price for nonprofits, which, you know, the taxpayers expect that, that's what we've done in our ballparks even, is required the sports associations to pay for the electricity. So, I, you know, now if we had complaints that every time, you know, say if Garden Club came to us, or any other group came to us and said, well, we went to Neighbor, and they said, oh, they're booked up, yet we found out they weren't booked, or every time we go to them, they had an excuse not to let us use it, but we're not seeing those complaints, so. Ira May?
Ira May Bruce, I was involved with building the center.
Oh, button there.
Turned it off, I'm sorry. I'm Ira May Bruce, I was involved with building the center, president of the Chamber of Commerce back in the aeons of time, when that center was built. The Chamber of Commerce was the first tenant in the building, and it operated the building for the county, with having people come in and scheduling the times and dates and places. Subsequently, the tourist development center moved in with the chamber and had two different offices there, and they continued to take the burden from the county of making sure that the rooms, the building was open, had a security system, only gave out keys to the people that had scheduled meetings there, and made sure that the building was cleaned up and that type of thing. This community center, of course, I guess was one of the first that was built in the county, and it relieved the county staff of the, making sure that it was taken care of, and it was locked up, and those types of things. It might be taken back and sold, it's used quite a bit, there are a lot of different organizations in our community that just won't fit into the visitor's center. Be fine to use the visitor's center building, but the building, the room there, it's about half the size of the room that's in the, in this building. It would seem to me that if the Garden Club and the chamber, or the Board of Realtors, I'm sorry, I've got to change hats here again, could work out an agreement to allow the Garden Club to have space in, in that room, that that would be the best thing for Navarre. The, having a building sit empty except when there are groups that want to come and use it, you're going to have to hire somebody to make sure it's taken care of, and this, the way it is now, I doubt if the county commission has heard anything about this building for, until this came up. I would strongly urge that you keep some sort of group in the building that is there and knows it's being maintained, and knows it's not being broken into. Thank you.
Commissioner. Thank you. Commissioner Williamson and Commissioner Melvin.
In response to that, I spoke with Tammy Simmons, who has our Recreation Department, who also manages the other community centers, and she said she would welcome taking it back, since she's already set up and has that job and setting the rates, that she's had inquiries in the past about it, and she would have no problem at all taking it back over and running it, just like she does the other community centers.
Commissioner Melvin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I was just going to point out the same thing that was just said, however, we have a standard rate that we charge for the use of these various community centers, and what is charged by Neighbor is in excess of that standard rate. None of that comes back to the county, that's used to offset their operational expenses. They've done a good job, nobody's throwing rocks at anybody, it's just, it's just that this is becoming a point of contention in the community. We run every other one, with the exception of Shamukla, and it just, I think it's a cleaner way to deal with the controversy at hand, just let the county take it back and, and deal with it just the way we do with all the others. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Before I recognize Mr. Rob Williamson, I would like to make a comment to that point. One, we're talking about growing government, even though it's a small way, rather than let the citizens that own this building maintain it. Also, in Baghdad, we have the Council on Aging, there's a tenant over there. Basically, they've got their building next door that Lachlan Votech was able to build for them, which is a beautiful addition to that park and community center, but they serve our senior citizens out of that community center. And there again, why have the power on, why have the air conditioner or heating running, and nobody be there? These buildings all belong to the citizens of our county, not to us as a Board of Commissioners, and as we put more burden on Ms. Simmons, we're going to have to maybe hire her more help. So, I still haven't heard anything that's going to make me change my mind, but I do, I do feel like that the Garden Center needs a little assistance in coming to a conclusion.
It seems like you have a great solution here provided before you in that they only want another year. So you've got a great tenant, you've got a group that has always answered the call for this board when you've needed support or needed that open conduit to the business community and the citizens of Navarre, whether it be for the Navarre Town Center, whether it be for BP oil spill, whether it be for whatever, they've always been there. And the one time that they need somebody to back them up, that, you know, it's, we need to throw them out immediately. It seems like they're saying, "Look, we know it was a temporary deal. We need them for another, we need the place for another year." You know, maybe consider saying, "Yeah, we do need to return this back to the county. We'll honor the one more year." And then at that, at that point, then it could go back to being a community center that could go be operated like the rest of Navarre. That's just my only comment. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shauler.
Rob just stole my speech. One of the things that I've talked with the county administrator about over the last few weeks is how we use our community centers. I know that the new one up in Pace, because I live next door to it, is heavily used. We've already had one group that wants to lease it for a specific period of time every day. And I think we've got to be very careful about not allowing one group to dominate facilities over another group. So I'm going to be obviously opposed to leasing our community centers. It's too bad that we are here today, Neighbor's Garden Club. I met with the garden club not long ago and told them, I said, "You know, when you got two opposing sides, y'all need to work it out because y'all probably won't like our decision." But I don't have a problem with Neighbor's managing in the past. I do agree with Commissioner Williamson. I think we need to reevaluate all of our community centers and see if we can't come up with a more consistent policy. I wouldn't, I would not have a problem with renewing the lease that Bob asked for for one year. And that would give y'all time to understand that we're going to probably be moving in a different direction in the future as we reevaluate those community centers.
Any other, Commissioner Williams?
I just wanted to comment on Rob's comments. I said nothing about throwing them out. I said work with them a reasonable amount of time so that they could find another place or do whatever they need to do, build a place or whatever. So I'm open to doing that, if it's six months or a year, whatever a reasonable amount of time is, to work with the folks. And I just want to clarify that.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to address a couple of issues if I could. It came up, one I'd like to address, Mr. Melvin's. The rate we charge is what the chamber charged. We simply kept the same rate in place that the chamber charged. So we didn't simply set that rate. The rate is when the chamber was operating the building on behalf of the county, the rate, it's the same rate we had. In regards to what you guys, I've talked to a couple of you about it and I realize you've got a tough decision before you. And it's simply not an easy one. It's unfortunate that we've got, we're two civic organizations, regardless of status. It's got to the point where we have opposing views of how we get there. We would not be opposed to looking at purchasing the building if the county decreed or decided in their infant wisdom that they no longer needed that building and therefore it was not an asset to the citizens and not needed. And the funds would come back. The board would be more than willing to look at purchasing it if, if that was the decision of the board. At this point juncture, we're still simply back where we're asked and we're going to ask that we be given one more year to look at this. Now, at the end of that time, if it's a decision of this board, that we effectively need to be planning to exiting this building at that time, then we well understand where you're going with that and we will so plan. We simply ask at this point juncture, it's not so easy to move so quickly, an organization, and we would like to make it a permanent move when we do it. So considering all those facts and considering that the citizens of the county are going to benefit from us staying one more year, from that standpoint, and we're willing to try to accommodate the garden club into the capacity that we think we can, and certainly with you guys' overview. Based off of that, we still think we're the best organization to stay at least for one year. So we thank you for that.
Thank you. All right. Any other, Commissioner Williams?
And I understand where Bob's coming from, but I think that if we vote Thursday, we need to vote some finality into making that the notice, not waiting a year to do the notice. If we're going to do it, we need to do it now. It's going to be six months or a year, a reasonable amount of time. I think we need to do that on Thursday, not wait another year and be hashing the same thing out again.
And I agree with your comments. The only part I disagree on is, again, just like the last subject, this has been vented several times. We've got citizens here who have taken time out of their daily schedule to be here, which I appreciate. I wish we had this kind of audience every county commission meeting because it gets kind of lonely up here, guys, sometimes. So please, I encourage participation in your county government. It makes it easier for us to make decisions in some cases by knowing input from the community. It's not what the five of us want for Santa Rosa County, it's what you as the citizens, we work for you as citizens. So at this time, I'd like to, because the question on the floor is whether Neighbor stays in the building or goes. Whether we sell the building, whatever we do in the next year is subjects that could be brought back to this board. So I'd like to make a motion right now that we go ahead and extend the contract with Neighbor, one year. I'm not going to fight you guys, or fight for two years because you guys already said just a year is fine, so I'll take that off the board for one year with a caveat that this board, look at the floor plan, get the schedule from the garden club, and we'll address some facility accommodations for you at that and, and come back to you and say, "Hey, this is the days they're going to meet. This is a facility we want you to, you know, move your supplies out of and allow them to use. And in exchange for that, you'll do the maintenance on the plants and stuff around the building." That way we address, you know, the cost involved, so you'll not have costs out of pocket. Don't go in there and use up all the toilet paper and not bring some back, so, that type of thing. So if a man understands my motion and Commissioner Melvin has a comment.
I do have a comment. I understand your motion and I can support that motion, but I want to tighten down one bolt there that was a little loose, that we go ahead and just stipulate that Neighbor clear out the storage area. I think that's fair and let's go ahead and vote on that Thursday. And then we will also Thursday, agree that we're going to turn this back over. Navarre community wants the community center back. Give them one year, give them clear notice and make stipulation now that there's room for the Garden Center in the room that Neighbor currently uses for supply storage. And I can live with that. I think the community can live with that.
Okay. I've not heard from a lot of, of course, I'm not that district representative, but I've not heard from a lot of community as far as any anxieties on Neighbor being in there. So I'd agree, we just do the year and between now and then, this board, look at that and come to a conclusion. You're asking me Thursday to go ahead and tell them, definitely one year is, it's over, we're going back to community, which may not end up after discussion being the best solution for it. So I wouldn't want to be that finite on an ending for it.
Where do you propose to make the notice?
Well, right now. We're going to, we're only giving you one year.
Okay. It's not really different, you're saying the same thing I said.
Yes. If you at the next meeting or six months from now bring it to this board as district representative, that we need to discuss turning this back to the community, we'll have time to study that subject rather than make it a part of the motion.
Ms. Chairman.
I've got everybody totally confused.
Yeah, and my comment would be, I think that what I would like, of course, to make a motion, if I get to make a motion, it would be that the county take this back under the county's control and we give Neighbor six months to a year to make their transition to another place that where they're not, it's not tied down for an exact year, but six months to a year. They may come back in eight months and say, "We've got our place, we're ready to move out." And so I just, I think that would give them a window there, but I want it to be on notice that the county is going to take back control of the building. And then we're not getting into trying to work out some type of difference between these folks here that I don't think you're going to be able to work out.
Well, again, we're asking to make a decision today on the fact that we're asking them to leave the building or the county's going to take them over. I'm not ready to make that decision because we really haven't gone into that discussion. I'd like to solicit information from the Navarre community as to the comments that Commissioner Melvin made. I think the only subject on today's agenda should be whether Neighbor retain it for one more year as a vote with the caveat that this board, I agree that they clean out the storage area and a caveat that this board's going to come back with a schedule of garden club usage of the building. And that would be my motion. Now, whatever we bring up within the year, I think everybody right now is on notice that, you know, we may take it back, we're going to, but we are going to solicit input from the community for that decision. Do you have any other comment?
Thank you. Jody Volmer, Navarre Garden Club, 8800 Sam Pine Drive in Navarre. I just wanted to just present one other piece of information from the community. You said you hadn't heard anything from the community. We have a petition that went out asking if, if they wanted to bring the community center back to the community. And we have pages of signatures from the community. How many? About 250, but there's more coming because, before Thursday. But the community is definitely interested in getting it back to the community.
All right. If you'll give them a Mr. Walker, I'm going to, I'm going to call vote. We've kicked this horse down the road enough. Let's, let's go.
I'd still like to address one issue.
Okay.
I think the petition is one of the things that's gone wrong here. I think that, I don't think any of the county commissioners anticipated pitting the county against each other. The garden club in its infant wisdom, where it's directed to or on their own, went out and to Publix and et cetera and solicited people to support their opinion. We didn't do that. We didn't think it was good for the community as a whole. And I think what we've gotten here is, we've gotten into a situation where we're intended to or not intended to, two organizations, and I don't think you guys will disagree, are good organizations, in essence, been pitted against each other. We didn't think soliciting volunteers or going to Publix, we got calls that the garden club had done that and they had called other organizations soliciting their support.
Okay. You'll sit down, we're going to, we're going to go ahead and do something. I'll add to my motion that the district commissioner, in the next four to six months, hold some town hall meetings. All five of us can go because there'll be advertised meetings and we get this input. Because I don't put much stock in petitions either because there again, you don't know how the question was posed, whether or not they're a citizen. So I don't put much stock in that. So I add to my motion that caveat also that within the next four to six months, we have some town hall meetings and then the five of us will know exactly how everybody feels.
Would you restate your motion?
Okay. Motion. I'll try to keep it simple.
And it does need to be something. I mean, you know, which we're going to be taking specific action.
Neighbor retain the building for one more year as the current contract, extension of the contract. Neighbor also understand that this board of commissioners will identify room and scheduling for the garden club for the next 12 months. Final caveat on this is that the district commissioner will call and hold town hall meetings for input as to use of the community center, be attended by all five board of commissioners and advertised properly. And I do so without objection.
Objection.
Okay. I'll call the vote.
Mr. Chairman, a point of clarification.
Thank you.
Are you moving this to Thursday or are you taking a straight vote right now? I'm not comfortable.
You're not?
We did that earlier today. Monday is typically a discussion day and we don't take final action on things unless it's imperative. I don't see this as imperative. We do have great public participation, but there are others that may not want to stand here today and address us, that may contact us between now and Thursday with their own input. So I'm not comfortable taking an up or down vote on this without giving them an opportunity to respond. I think we may be setting a dangerous precedent if we start moving things to Monday discussion or Monday, Monday vote without some compelling reason.
Well, again, my reason, my reason only being that this has been vented several times and there's been quite a bit of discussion. Had it been a new topic today, I certainly would not do so, but I respect your condition. I would just like for all these folks, certainly if you would like to come back Thursday, you're welcome to, but at least get a gut feel whether they need to be here or not, so.
And if I could, we, I think the people in attendance can see kind of where we're coming from. We can't talk about how we would vote necessarily or what have you, but I think, I think it's reasonable to give the Board of Realtors another year. The only thing that I'm, I'm really concerned about in your motion as presented is us carving out space for the garden club within the community center, not knowing how that would impact Neighbor's operations or not knowing whether or not that's the space that the garden club actually needs. Because I think they've, they've said they may need something else. So I don't know that we need to micromanage it that much. Let's make a decision on whether Neighbor is going to be able to stay in there for another year and, and encourage them to work with the garden club. Let them use the facility, let them come in and use the, the meeting room whenever they want. Clean up after yourselves real good, you know, bring in toilet paper or what have you. Make sure that it's at no net cost to Neighbor. That seems to me like a win-win for the two groups. You don't get everything you want, neither, nobody does, and unfortunately, that's, that's kind of the rule up here. But that gives Neighbor another year, you have some certainty. We have a year to decide what the long-term course of the community center. We don't need to take a year. We need, in the next three or four months, we need to make a decision on whether or not we're going to declare it surplus or bring it back in under the county to manage. But Neighbor is entitled and they deserve an answer on that within the next three or four months so they can develop their long-term plans. So that's what I'm going to, to support on Thursday.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Shauler.
I concur with Commissioner Lynchard. Everything he said about the issue is extending that contract for another year during that 12-month period. Town hall meetings or whatever method we choose, go through a reevaluation process of that community center. Do we want to keep it? Do we want to leave it as is? Do we want to bring it back into county? But here again, let's vote on that on Thursday. I don't see the sense of urgency. You had said earlier on Thursday, "We get lonely up here, so maybe everybody will come back."
Okay. I support that 100%, so I'll withdraw my motion. And, yeah, we'll continue this to Thursday and do, move it to Thursday without objection hearing that it passes. All right. Item number three is discussion request for proposal format for solicitation of operator management services at Navarre Pier. Mr. Walker?
Chairman, in your packet is, you know, we had talked about coming back at the first of the calendar year. We're in the third year of a three-year management agreement, lease agreement with the pier. I believe that, that lease runs through, I believe it's June, something like that. It's, it's June of this year. I do think that's going to be somewhat, I think, of a problem. We need to maybe talk about timing of that, but, but to, to making, be making this decision in, in, in the height of the season seems a little, 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 you know, a little, just doesn't seem wise. The reason it started, then that's when the pier opened, that's when we got it from the contractor and went that way. But this is just a draft of the RFP. We've obviously not sent it out. We want to get your blessing. This is a, and we've discussed this in the past, is this is a broad format, really allowing people, the respondents, which we got a number last time, to make, to make their proposal without us getting interacting it and with the, the thought being that we would, once we got into the lease itself or the arrangement, we could deal with the things like that had been a problem, the amplified noise, if you will, electric service, those type things. And Ms. Jones has a list of those that it just seemed, and she may want to speak to it, but it seemed a little strange putting it in a RFP formatted cell. It's just kind of our thought, but it's yours.
Comments? Mr. Walker pointed out something to us all that I think is, well, you know, due to the opening date of the pier, we, you know, we set the contract that... to the opening date of the pier, we, you know, we set the contract at, at that time in June. What was that date again, Mr. Walker?
I believe it's, it's in June sometimes. Ms. Jones says she believes it's the 24th, which probably would have been the second meeting.
Exploration of the current contract.
Right.
I don't think it'd be prudent, and I have not talked to Ms. Sly about this, I just, after that comment that the county administrator made, I, I think in order to correct that error, that the board ought to consider maybe moving that contract or extending that contract until the off-season. June's coming at us like a freight train, and Mr. Walker indicated it's right in the middle of tourist season, the high time of the year. I think if we executed a contract and, and Ms. Sly's group, the pier management group current, unfortunately didn't win the contract, which I, I think you're doing an outstanding job out there, and I'd like to see that continue with the caveats that, you know, we make some corrections to the current contract. But I, I think it'd only be prudent for us to extend that contract to the off-season, and I'd open that to the floor for comments and suggestions.
Certainly if you didn't do it this time, we would want, when we went to the next lease, we would certainly recommend that you true it up to, to that point. It's just whichever you're comfortable with.
Comments, board members? Mr. Lynchard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think that's a very valid point that Mr. Walker raised. You know, having at the height of our tourist season to shut down operations and change management could potentially lead to a couple of weeks of just dead time out there on the pier. Certainly the, the restaurant that you have out there, you know, a lot of that equipment is, is not going to remain. So if there were a new manager who comes in there, restaurant shut down, you pull equipment off, you start doing that a couple of weeks before the termination of your lease, the other person can't get in there until the termination of the lease, takes them a couple of weeks to set up. So you have potentially a month there where the, at least a month, you know, where the restaurant snack bar is closed. And, and, you know, that wouldn't be good for anybody. So I would support delaying the, the termination of the lease until the off-season.
Other comments, please.
Mr. Chairman, I concur.
Mr. Melvin.
I concur in principle. The only comment I was gonna make is we could continue to press forward with the, with the solicitations and open them on the advertised date and then provide for a transition period if, if our current operator is not a successful bidder, whatever that transition date would be.
Okay. Then I'm gonna move to Thursday that we continue soliciting bids, put that out for bid, but that we also add to Thursday's agenda an extension of, when's the middle of the dead season?
Well, various fish, various fishes move through the area. We probably.
I was, I mean.
But, but we need to get this on the road. I thought we already had this out to the public.
We don't, but we, I mean, we certainly, there's nothing to preclude us from, from going ahead and, and advertise. And I'm just saying is, we, we can get it on the road. I, I, what it is, is I would think that we, we could do it at the turn of the, of the calendar year. I mean, it, I know, I know winter, December, January, and February are, are certainly slow, slow months. I mean, that'd be, that'd be the time to be dealing with this as opposed to in June, which is just really.
Sure. But, Mr. Chairman, my motion would be that we direct the staff to get this on, get this out to the public directly, as in, you know, the next business day, and that we continue the current operator, should they not be the successful bidder, for up to six months. I think that would, that would handle the, the dead season and, and give whoever, you know, if, if there's, if there's no change in this, there's, there's no, no disruption to the public. And if there is a change, then the only, there should be no disruption there because you're into just the walking season. The fishing season is pretty much dead by then. So I think we should go ahead with a request for proposals with this, with this new date because the date in this document is behind us.
Right. And all this is, is just a specimen. It, we'd, we'd do it pursuant to normal.
All right.
Thirty-day process.
The, the new contract, Ms. Jones, have you had time to work on the new contract yet? Language of it?
Not at all, no, sir.
But certainly, and I guess I'm just asking a question. The, the, I don't see any problem in, in contractually changing the power negotiation for electricity. I mean, that'll just be an item on the contract that will reward as, as to how the power is paid for and covered. How about the noise portion of that? Will that be in the contract? I don't need an answer, just yes or no.
We, we'll just have to figure all that out.
But I, I know you don't have the language. I'm just asking if that's gonna be a part of the contract.
I would surely expect, we, we've learned a good deal during this time, and there's a list of things that we need to handle, and we can do that. Again, I looked over the proposals you got before, which were fairly broad and wide-ranging. There were a lot of different things you could have chosen from. So I've not worked on a contract at all because I think a lot of that may depend on what kind of proposal you accept.
Okay. Then the way I understand it, Thursday's, we'll move to Thursday, extension of the current contract to June, or to, to January 1. You said six months.
Well, no, sir. Would you like me to restate what I'd said?
Okay, well, from June to January, six months.
What I said was we should go ahead and get the request for proposals on the street as soon as possible.
Well, that was my next thing.
With, when we, when, you know, with, with a due date that gives the business community a reasonable amount of time to, to respond, I don't know what that is, but 30, 60 days to put together a proposal. And should, should the current contractor not be successful, we would just have to build in the date and, until, to move the transition into the dead period. So.
That's basically what I was getting to, which if, I, I took it from your six months to indicate January 1.
Well, you know, you don't, don't have to specify a, a hard time, you know, it.
Six months.
Transitional period up to six months would do it.
Okay. Commissioner Lynchard, Commissioner Salver.
Mr. Chairman, I, I understand where Commissioner Melvin's coming from, but for future contracts, I'd like to go ahead and see a date specific versus giving six months for transition period. Let's just go ahead and build in that, that final date, and that way we don't have to worry about it in the future.
And we won't, we won't let the contract catch us right in the middle of fishing season again because that, you know, that's just the way it happened because when the pier came online, I guess, but.
Yeah.
If I understand, obviously we'll, we'll have the item on about approval because I want y'all to approve the, the, the request for proposal. And obviously then we'll, we'll, we'll send it out. And, and do you want to deal with the extension? And I, I agree, if you're gonna do any type of extension, it needs to be time-specific. The, it, it's just hard for us to manage a four to six months or, or some period of time.
And, and that's where I come up with a January 1 date, taking your six months and the input from county administrator to give a date specific. I was kind of concerned with that time of the year because of the holidays, but if county administrator's comfortable with that.
All I'm just saying is that's the deadest time from what my observation.
Actually, the perfect time to transition from one person to the other would be December or January because if we're not successful, then we can move our stuff out. And, and I can tell you, it'll take more than 30 days to reset that up.
I, I agree with that.
And then by the end of February, we've got cobia season, so we're starting to ramp up now.
Okay, then I'd change my motion to December 1.
Okay.
Okay? So everybody fully understand what we're moving to Thursday? Any questions? Okay. All right. Good. And Dorothy, I certainly hope you take over the contract again because I, I remember the past proposals, and they were going to be quite costly to this county. So I appreciate what you've done out there over the last three years, two and a half years. Thank you. All right. Hearing no objections to the motion, it moves to Thursday. Speeding right along here now. Item four is the, now y'all don't leave, we, we enjoy the company. Item number four is discussion of proposals from Leathers and Associates, Associates for renovation of Benny Russell Park Playground. Mr. Walker?
Mr. Chairman, in your packet is the proposal from Leathers and Associates, and, and this was the firm that designed the park and, and, and actually oversaw the, the, the construction of the park through its community build program. You see their proposal to oversee, to design and oversee kind of a renovation, and that's at the cost of $45,500. And of course, that would include their being on site. You see their estimated material list. The, the other thing is, is I need to get with, we need to get with Mr. Whitfield and Mr. Allen, Ms. Simmons, and, and, and deal with some kind of proposal on, on the use of maybe Public Works people to do some of that work. We've got some skilled people that can do that. It's gonna take about 10 days. Absent that, we try to have to put this into some kind of specification format and bid it out. So.
Commissioner Lynchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My only, when I was looking through here, the, the thing that struck me was the cost of, of the, the rehab. And have we, have we priced out getting a new facility, new playground put in? Because I know the one in Tiger Point, the new, new type, new, new playground, design, construction, everything was about $130,000, I think.
Yeah. And, and I agree because Benny Russell Park's not that old, but if it's utilized to the point where things are getting wore out already, that's a good thing. But I did have several questions myself. One on the estimated contractor labor, 15 workers, eight, or eight 10-hour days, 1,200 hours times four, is that $4 an hour?
Forty dollars.
Okay. Because I was gonna say, if you can hire people for $4 an hour nowadays, I want to know where they're at, so.
It's $40.
Okay. And I didn't divide it in there, which I.
And obviously, we would, we would pay for, I mean, if it's our labor, we'll handle that, but yeah, when you do the math, that's gotta be 40.
Right.
Times 1,200.
And this project, the cost of this project comes from Commissioner Williamson's rec fund?
And Commissioner Salver shares in that.
Okay. All right. Any other?
But I think, and there's some funds already available there that we talked about.
I thought this was general fund.
I did, that's what I.
As I had, is really, this is not, you know, this is, this really is, is, is maintenance.
Yeah, that's right.
Granted, it's expensive maintenance, but again, we were trying to, and, and, and we really hadn't even entered in the question. I guess we, we were house-blind on this, that we, we just wanted to renovate it and hadn't even thought critically about the potential of just replacing it. So.
I, I think it might be worth looking into because, you know, this is, we're gonna rehab a, a 10 or 12-year-old playground when we may be able to buy brand-new equipment for the same cost or just a little bit more. I, I think it's worth, worth taking a look at, getting Tammy to get some cost estimates.
We can at least try to get some kind of cost, cost estimate on that. My sense is it's gonna be more expensive, essentially just based on what we're doing and, and that kind of thing, but we'll just have to try to document that best we can.
Yeah, and, and I had a question, even on this estimated payment schedule, it seems to me like they're getting all the money up front. I would sort of have a problem with that.
We can work on that.
But, I mean, if we were to go that route, but I do remember in our conversation before that Mr. Walker is right, it's supposed to come out of general fund.
Certainly if you, you and Mr. Salver are interested, I mean.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I agree with Commissioner Williamson.
We're, we're interest poor.
All right. Somebody, somebody give me an idea of what we, where we're going. I, I, I agree with Commissioner Lynchard. I think let's, let's take a look at just taking it apart, put a new one back together.
Okay, let, the, the, since this is Tuesday, we're gonna be Thursday. If we can try to put something together, we will. If not, we'll just hold it for two weeks and bring it back to you.
Okay. All right. And I think that'd be more prudent, because two days is kind of hard to do.
And I will mention too that on this design development, construction document phase, we have to have that before we can see what participation the county could be involved because we're talking about having county labor involved too.
Okay. Right. And, and another thing, and, and I've had discussions like this with Tammy before, it may be time and prudent for the county to have somebody trained in, in erecting this type of equipment and, and curtail our cost if, because we're always gonna have replenish it or replace it or upgrade it or add to it, whatever it happens to be. And, and as we can see, there's, and I know it's just not for setting it up, but I mean, we're, we're talking about $4,500, $45,500 just basically to tell us how to build a park and, and oversee that it's put together right, so.
And, and it's true, and, and, and that's one of the things that we've kind of looked at in the, in, in the past, just try to get somebody certified for that because the liability of these parks, as Commissioner Lynchard knows, when we went, went in with the, the rebuild or the replacement in, in Tiger Point is, is liability is a huge thing anymore. So let us see what we can work out on that.
All right, and we'll look for that, I guess. I, I don't think task needs, our staff needs to be tasked for Thursday. Let's move it to the following two weeks from now. Okay. All right. Hearing no objections to that, it passes. Okay, item number, number five, discussion of termination of lease agreement with Springwood Timberlands LLC for Sandy Landing Boat Ramp or property.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is the license that we had used with, used to be RMS Timber Holdings, and that's Springwood Timberlands for the Sandy Landing Boat Ramp. That's, we, we, we've constructed the Shamaka Springs ramp, and, and this will no, no longer be needed. So we would just terminate that license agreement.
Okay. Pretty straightforward. Any questions from board members? If not, move to Thursday without objection. Item number six is discussion of scheduling public hearing on ordinance regarding low incomes, senior citizens, adware, and property tax exemption. Mr. Brown, you're in the audience today. Do you have comments on that? And glad to have you with us today.
Good to hear your question. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. How's that? Thank you, Commissioners. Has anybody told y'all lately, thank you for the service you guys do? I get that all the time, but.
I get cards and letters by the day.
I do appreciate what you, you guys do. Earlier last week, I created some confusion about the commission in an advertisement that we, we put out about the senior exemption was the pre-existing senior condition of 25,000. I especially want to apologize to Sandy and Yvonne. I created a lot of confusion because in our ad, it says the commission, the board of county commissioners approved. Well, we do that to say any exemption that you must approve, that it's approved, and the confusion went from there, and, and I sincerely apologize for that. But what we're here about today is the new constitutional unfunded mandate from the state legislature that put on and the citizens voted by 61% margin to provide a senior exemption only for county tax. And Commissioner, it, it does widen that gap. That Commissioner Salver always likes my slide where it shows the difference between the school funding from the state and the county's funding. This requires a senior that has a limited income, must have a county or municipality ordinance passed, property must have a market value less than a quarter of a million dollars. The owner, the owner must have title to the property and maintain its permanent residence for at least 25 years, and must be the age of 65 years or older. We have research back that we could initially, without a manual search, there's something over 200 people, if they all qualify, would amount to about $40,000 a year in taxes, savings total from the county and reduced county taxes to those citizens. It has little impact to the county, but it has a great impact for those people that would qualify for that. The, this is one of the few amendments that I was in favor of. I don't normally voice my opinion one way or the other on amendments. I let people do that, but this one, because of the people that come in and apply for the existing senior condition, I see some of the people and the needs that they have, and, and I think this was a, a good amendment that the people passed. was a, a good amendment that the people passed. But you must pass an ordinance in order for us to give this to them. The, the requirement was, you had to have the ordinance passed. And to me, it was impossible for you to do it for this year. So we're looking forward to implementation of this ordinance for next year. And you must pass that ordinance in order to do that. And you must have the two meetings in a non-emergency status to do that. So that would fulfill that requirement. As I think, I understand it, and as maybe the county attorney has explained it to me a couple of times, the, the two meetings that we have to have in a non-emergency, this is the first one. So that's, that's what this is about, that amendment. But if you have any questions, Commissioner, I'd be more than happy to try and answer them.
Greg, when you say, Greg, when you say limited income, is that a set amount, or is it a?
It, it's a set amount. Currently, for this year, it's a household income. And the, that means husband, wife, children, grandparents, anybody that has an income that lives in that home, total household income cannot exceed twenty-seven thousand and thirty dollars this year. And then that's adjusted according to the CPI every year.
And certainly, anybody that's living and surviving off twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars a year could use any help they can get, I'm sure.
Well, that's why I'm saying, there are a lot of people that get the twenty-five thousand senior that make a lot less than that twenty-seven thousand. And the twenty-five year requirement's going to limit a large number of people. Not so much the quarter of a million dollars. I don't think that we're going to have many in that category making that amount of money. But the twenty-five year residency will also cut down the number of people being able to qualify.
Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Brown, you can be able to quantify the impact on our revenue?
We, we quantified back almost fourteen years that we have on automated records. It was something over two hundred people that potentially could qualify. And if all of those qualify back to the twenty-five years and meet all the requirements, it would be somewhere around forty thousand three hundred dollars in reduced taxes to the county.
But that would be the first year, and every year people turn sixty-five.
There are people that go off and people that'd come on.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Williamson?
And your office would be responsible for getting the proper, a proper documentation for that?
Yes, sir. We didn't get any funding from the state for that either.
Yeah.
No, I didn't expect it. I left my surprise look in the car, and I didn't bring it with me.
From what I gather from Mr. Brown, and the request we need to, or the task, or motion we need to make is that the county administrator and attorney, county staff, draft an ordinance and schedule the times for the public hearings. And I make that motion without objection. Could move it to Thursday, and I hear no objection, so it moves to Thursday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number seven. Discussion of use of a large pavilion of Navarre Park by the Navarre Cert Amateur Radio Club, June twenty-second, twenty-third, two thousand thirteen, for annual amateur radio replay league field day. A discussion from members of board. Commissioner Melvin, this is your district.
Yes, sir. And this is an ongoing event, and it, it sounds a little innocuous. You may not recognize it. But these are the people that during earthquakes, fires, floods, you hear from around the world to get the word out, because this is high-frequency radio stuff. And they perform a, a critical service to, to government in times of emergencies, and invite you all out to join us. It's a fun time.
So you put that in form of motion for Thursday?
Yes, sir. I'd move that to Thursday without objection.
All right. Hearing no objection, it moves to Thursday. Item number eight is a discussion of a resolution regarding repeal decision by a federal agency to shorten snapper harvesting season. We did that last year. Commissioner Williamson signed off on it. However, the, you know, there appears to be even more shortened season. And I think with this, although we don't have big, big fishing fleets in Santa Rosa County, our neighboring counties do. And it certainly affects our quality of life and, and our ability to attract tourists down here. It limits that time. So I open for comments. Commissioner Lynch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this, for, for Santa Rosa County, more so than the commercial impact for charter boats or, or commercial landings, I think this goes to recreational enjoyment of, of the Gulf of Mexico. The, the resolution that we passed last summer was because we had a forty-day snapper season. And I believe twenty-one of the first twenty-eight days, seas were six foot or greater. So you couldn't get out and fish anyway.
Don't get a rain day.
So that was last year, forty, forty days. This year, my understanding is, they're now looking at a twenty-seven-day red snapper season, possibly moving down to a twenty-one-day red snapper season. So if you're a recreational fisherman, you have three, maybe four weekends to fish for red snapper. If you have a job, unless you take off work to go fishing, you're going to have four weekends. You have eight days on the water, as long as your pastor lets you skip church, those, those eight, those four Sundays. And, and it's just, it's so burdensome and onerous on, on the recreational fishermen. Louisiana has gone non-compliant with the federal government, and they have opened up a special state season. I believe the dates are from March to October. And they allow red, red snapper fishing in state waters on weekends only, during those eight or nine months of the year. I think we need to, rather than taking any action as a board this week, I think we need to refer this to our marine advisory committee, ask them to, to get out, talk to the recreational fishermen, investigate, you know, the possibility of, of going non-compliant. And then get with our other counties, the, certainly the eight county coalition in the Panhandle that's, that's been working together on Restore, and petition FWC to break away and establish a state water-only season for red snapper that will allow us to continue to enjoy the Gulf of Mexico.
Thank you. Commissioner Melvin?
Mr. Chairman, I'm the board's designate to the small county coalition from Florida Association of Counties. And this is a very, very hot topic of discussion amongst the small counties. It's absolutely, pardon me, it's absolutely killed the charter boat fishing, because nobody can, a few people can afford it, but very few people will fly into Destin, fly into Pensacola, charter a boat, and go out in the Gulf and catch one snapper and turn out and come back. They just won't do it. And, and the Gulf is just teeming, just absolutely teeming with snapper, to the point that some frustrated, although frustrated, misguided fishermen have murdered several dolphins, because the dolphins have learned that we can't keep the snapper. So when you catch a snapper, the dolphin are just right there at the, at the fan tail of the boat, waiting for you to feed them. And so we really, really need to, the going non-compliant thing, I think I can, I can get that to the coalition of, Small County Coalition and to, and to FAG. And that's excellent suggestion.
These are the reasons that I wanted to bring this to the board today and ask for the resolution, to get that on, on the chart, let our fishing community, whether it be commercial or sports fishing, know that this board of commissioners hears them loud and clear. And we need to extend that voice both to the state and our federal government. So I'm looking forward to how we change this language. And I think it needs to be strong language, not just, we're asking, but we're telling you type of stuff. Because it's, it's time for us to stand up for these people. And I like snapper, so it makes the cost higher. So I appreciate the input from board members, and I'll, let's move this to Thursday's agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Okay. Item.
May I have one comment to that?
Sure.
I would like the resolution to, to, to speak to the economic impact, because it is a tremendous economic impact. When you have people that don't come into the area, granted, Santa Rosa County doesn't have a charter boat industry, but Destin does, and Pensacola does, and they certainly come and stay with us. So it, it, it is a direct financial impact on Santa Rosa County. And I would appreciate if we made sure those, that language was in whatever we put together.
Thank you.
I mean, I wasn't, I'm not, I don't think we have a resolution by Thursday. What I thought we were going to do, if I understood what Commissioner Lynch said, was that we would refer this to the marine advisory committee and investigate the, the, the potential of going non-compliant. I'll have to get some more in there.
And if we could, I know this is for Thursday, but let's, let's ask them, to, to get back to us within thirty or forty-five days with some recommendations, depending on what their meeting schedule is. But the snapper season is going to be, you know, it kicks off on June one normally. So we could ask them to not Terry.
All right. And was Texas and Louisiana going non-compliant? Okay. I thought there was more than one state. So, okay. I appreciate input again, and staff has its direction. So we'll hear back from staff as soon as possible on that, on that item. Item number nine is discussion of fiscal year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen budget calendar of events. That's item number nine. April one through thirty, Budget Office provides technical assistance in preparation of budget. This schedule goes right through July twenty-third, when we'll do budget, budget presentations of all constitutional officers. Then it carries over to basically September seventeenth, when we'll submit our, to the tax collector, property appraiser, and Department of Revenue, the resolution that this board adopts at that time. All the dates and times are available on the county website, and also on this hard copy. I'm not going to take the time to read them all off now. I'll just give you the highlights. So if there's any other comments, questions from board members, seeing none?
I just want to be sure that y'all look at, at specifically where, where, where you'll be involved. And it was, you know, with the, that, that pre-budget workshop in June, and then the, the June twenty-third workshops. Those, those are the ones that I need you to look at. They're clear on your calendars that we, that, that we see. Just be sure that y'all are available for that.
All right. All right. No action needs taken on this Thursday.
I always, I mean, y'all approved the budget calendar, but I just wanted you specifically before Thursday to be sure and look at your own calendars.
Mr. Chairman.
On your items.
Is it, just me personally, I don't know how the other four feel, but I would appreciate if you'd go ahead and block my calendar now, so that I can see it and I don't conflict myself.
We would do that.
I would appreciate if you'd go ahead and at least mark my calendar, so that I don't stumble over that.
All right. If any other members have conflicts, we'll bring it up Thursday and make sure we iron them out. So we'll discuss this again on Thursday and approve a final calendar. I do so without objection. Hearing none, we'll talk about it again Thursday. Item number ten is public hearing. Item scheduled for eight, nine-thirty Thursday morning, January twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen, which is rezoning of property at eighty-three seventy-five Gulf Boulevard from, from Hotel Navarre Beach and Navarre Beach High Density Residential to Navarre Beach Commercial, consistent with the Land Development Code. We'll open up, hearing up promptly at nine-thirty on Thursday. Comments or questions from members of the board? I look for that to be quite, probably, it'll probably be one of them public hearings that we actually have folks at. So we will look forward to hearing you then. Item number eleven. Ms. Jones, since this public hearing is not scheduled till Thursday, can we take any comments today?
That would be at your discretion, sir.
Okay. Certainly. Come forward, please.
I'm John F. Koschinsky, Jr., but known as Jack all my life, because of the junior. And I'm president of the board at Navarre Towers Association. And the majority of the people that own there are not living in, in Florida. They live in other states. But, but they are very concerned. And we were shocked and strongly opposed the changing of the, the Holiday Inn property from hotel to commercial. Navarre Beach is not Destin. It is a family-oriented beach. And the, there's a strong possibility that if you do a commercial where there's going to be disruptions in the peaceful and current existing way of life there, that the, you will not gain monetary results. Because the people that come there, we don't, we don't, we don't do anything with, you know, the, the students on vacation. It's a family-oriented organization. And so the people that come there would look for other places to go. And the property value would go down. So we, we strongly recommend that you reverse your decision and redo the Holiday Inn property to, you know, a resort holiday inn.
Okay. Thank you.
Motel, hotel, you know. Because I don't think you, you will gain anything by doing commercial.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
We have the rest of the board here, except one member. And they're going to, they would like to speak also.
I'll allow everybody to speak, but we don't need to hear the same thing over and over again. I mean, we've got quite a few emails, so if you've got something new to add, we'll.
I got something new to add. My name is Robert Cooley. I live at eighty-two seventy-one Gulf Boulevard, which is adjacent to the property in question, Navarre Towers. We've done a lot of research on this, looking at different things. We had a meeting with Becky Cato. It's come to our attention that the comprehensive plan that was developed in two thousand and two, that is causing you to want to rezone this to commercial, there is no reason that anybody can come up with of why they took out hotel motel and put in commercial. My understanding is there were no notes in the file. The person who did that is not here anymore. So it would be a very easy thing to go back and make this hotel motel. The other thing I would point out is that the lease for that property says, "The above-described property is leased to lessees for the purpose of constructing, maintaining, and operating a two-hundred-unit motel." The comprehensive land plan should reflect what's in the lease. It does not if you change it to commercial. The other thing I would mention to you is that the corporation that owns that property has not paid a dime of, of property tax since two thousand and two. They owe you two-point-seven million dollars now. If you compound that at twelve percent interest over the ten years, you're looking at a tax bill of almost six million dollars. The appraised value of the property is only five and a half million. So it doesn't make sense to me why they would pay that tax if, when the option would be to just let it go back to the county and you sell it at auction. That is one of the major reasons that we need to maintain that as hotel motel. So if some developer gets a hold of that property and decides to want to put a Ferris wheel out there, or some other nuisance, that they can't do that. So we respectfully request that you send this back to the zoning committee and let them make it hotel motel, which they say they can easily do if you instruct them to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Wallace Mahoot, fifty-five hundred Cox Road, Milton, Florida. I just have a question. If the zoning is made commercial, but the lease says hotel, which one takes precedent? If the zoning is made commercial, but the lease says hotel, which one takes precedent?
May I answer that?
Sure.
Question Melvin. I get that question probably three times a month, four times a month, and I've, the county attorney's tired of seeing me come down the hall. The, the lease and/or deed does not drive land use. Local ordinances drive land use. If the lease says it's strictly to be a mobile home park, just pull one out of the air, but it's in an area that's not, doesn't allow mobile home parks, you're just out of luck. So the, the short answer is ordinance governs. The language in the lease and the language in the, or the language in the deed will never trump local ordinance. Local ordinance will always prevail.
So in other words, then the lease couldn't save the, the land development code rules, in other words, and the zoning?
If, if, if I might, Ms. Jones, please.
Commissioner Melvin is exactly right in that the local ordinance does control, but in the case where the lease is more restrictive but still has allowable uses within the zoning, then that would control. So in this case, the property would still be limited to hotel motel and things that are associated with those uses.
Okay, thank you. So then my question is, why can't you reinstate the hotel districting? Why does it have to be changed to commercial?
There's really no reason we can't. We just need to open up the discussion, I believe.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
It, it was apparently, because I asked all the questions you're asking us right now when this came up, it was a Scribner's error. This change should have been made in two thousand and four. Somebody help me with my dates.
To commercial.
Well, what, what happened was the two thousand and two land development code changed the nomenclature, so that, so that Navar Beach Hotel no longer existed in the list of nomenclature, and in its place, it was Navar Beach Commercial. That change should have been posted in two thousand and four, when it was implemented by the board in two thousand and four. Somehow or other, it slipped through the crack. Now, this is, is what the staff has told me, because I brought those very questions to them. And the recent publicity about the new hotel coming back prompted the staff to put the zoning change on, on the agenda, but we didn't get that done correctly. It wasn't properly advertised, et cetera. So we had to scrub that and start again, and that's what we're doing now. I've heard something here today for the first time that I was unaware of, and that is that this board can reverse that and just go back to the old zoning and do away with that entire hassle that we have inbound, beginning Thursday, and going on ad nauseam. I don't look forward to it, but that's, that's the history of it.
Right. Well, thank you for the explanation. So it seems that most of the people in Navar would like it to remain, the, the hotel zoning, and if the lease is going to support that, I, I think that would probably be the best way to go. But I, I was just curious of how everything happened. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to close this conversation now, because it is a public hearing that, that was advertised for Thursday. I appreciate folks coming up here for that, but we really need to continue this on Thursday. But I think all the comments give the five of us something to chew on for the next couple of days, so appreciate you doing that. Item number eleven is an add-on that I placed on the agenda. Mr. Walker, did you get everybody a copy of that, please? And I'm going to call it Resolution two thousand thirteen, wherever we are in line for that, but basically, it's, I read it. "Resolution to the, to the Legislature, Governor, and Cabinet of the State of Florida, from the Board of County Commissioners of Santa Rosa County, Florida urging that everything in their powers be used to protect constitutional rights of citizens of Santa Rosa County and the State of Florida to keep and bear arms." It has some where-ases and where-ases on there that I spoke to Ms. Jones about, and she's going to work the next couple of days to clarify that language, so I don't want to read it in the record right now, till we, till she has an opportunity to clarify that and bring it back again Thursday, that we possibly, if I have board support, that we'll resolve this resolution and send it forward to our governor and staff. The resolution always, the final comment in this resolution is that, two things, that it be further resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Santa Rosa County, on behalf of the government and citizens of Santa Rosa County, request and implores the Legislature, Governor, and Cabinet of the State of Florida to use all of its lawful authority and power to resist or overturn any federal gun control measures that violate the right of Florida citizens to keep and bear arms, and be it further resolved that Resolution number ninety-four dash oh-nine of the Board of Commissioners of Santa Rosa County that was passed and adopted unanimously on April fourteenth, nineteen ninety-four be reaffirmed. So I'll ask that we move that. If there's any comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
The only comment I have is that before we adopt any policy, regulation, or resolution, or ordinance regarded to this, we may want to get an Attorney General's opinion, because the legislature made it clear two years ago that they were preempting the counties in all matters related to firearms, whether it be the possession, use, manufacture, or sale. We're talking about possession here. The legislature has stated, if we adopt a policy, that policy is invalid. If we adopt a policy and attempt to enforce it, then any one of us can be fined individually or removed from office for doing that. I think this is an example of the legislature's overreaching a couple of years ago, but I think it is, it is something that we should take into consideration before we consider.
And, and therein lies the reason that I didn't read it in its entirety, and I'm asking Ms. Jones to quantify that. I believe this is a statement that if I have support of the board in the next couple of days, we probably, hopefully, will hear, you know, the media will get this out, and we'll hear from citizens whether we have support, but I, I don't want to do anything and get us in trouble, but I want to, I think it's time that we take a stand on this, and of course, I'm open to, you know, I'm only one of them.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I agree with the concept. I've been obviously talking to the same group you have. I went to a tea party meeting last week at the Pace Community Center next to my house, and we had about two hundred people show up. Sheriff Hall was the guest speaker. I would just encourage us as we go forth in possibly drafting this resolution, that we also get input from him, since he'll be the top sheriff, to enforce whatever it is that we're going to recommend, as far as weapons go.
All right, thank you. And I'll just ask that we turn this over to Ms. Jones for further review and comments, if she has time Thursday, we appreciate that. All right? I do so without objection. Hearing none, it moves. Item number twelve is all about our beaches some more. We've got Coastal Technologies here today with us, and they're going to give us a report on how we've been doing, or how our beaches are doing, and certainly, they've been doing an outstanding job for Santa Rosa County, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, members of the board, county staff. My name is Michael Walther. I'm a principal engineer and president of Coastal Tech, and hopefully Roger can pull up my presentation for us all. Thank you, Roger. This morning, I'm going to give you a briefing on the status of the Navar Beach berm and dune restoration project, largely leading to put forth a recommendation that it's time for the county to move forward with implementing the permitting and final design, and ultimately finding a funding source for the maintenance of this project. In general, I'm going to give you a very brief history of the, of the project, look at our preliminary design for renourishment of the beach, touch upon funding issues, touch upon those efforts that are required to re-nourish or go to construction, to re-nourish the beach, be informed some recommendations, and of course, be happy to answer your questions. If we look historically in the big picture, the erosion along Navar Beach is, is really pretty moderate. It's less than two feet per year over a long period of time, and that, that erosion is driven primarily by historical storm events. And, next slide, please, Roger. And particularly in two thousand and four, in the course of planning for the construction that occurred in two thousand and six, and then again in two thousand and five, we saw a number of hurricanes that impacted the Navar Beach area, including Hurricanes Ivan and Dennis, and both of these storms pushed a lot of sand off the beach, pushed sand back into the uplands, pushed sand on the roads, pretty much shut down the island, but it also caused extensive damage along the shoreline and moved the shoreline further landward, whereas, as reflected in the bottom-right photograph there, at the very western end of Navar Beach, high tide and low tide were pretty much under that, that building prior to the beach nourishment project. So in two thousand and six, the county, after obtaining the necessary permits, getting some funding from the state, awarded a contract to Weeks Marine, who brought in a dredge, a hopper dredge, that took sand literally off the seafloor from offshore, brought it in via the hopper dredge to an offloading station, and then pumped it onto the beach through a pipeline, literally advancing the shoreline further seaward, as the pipeline would discharge sand directly, sand and water mixture right onto the beach, to where ultimately, at the completion of the project in, in November of two thousand and six, was very dramatic difference between what the beach conditions were before and the beach conditions afterwards. And I'm going to notice in this photograph that you can see the, the dune feature that is immediately seaward, where the overwalks go over the beach. That dune feature has been a very significant element of the beach project. It has prevented some, several storms that have occurred since two thousand and six from overtopping and flooding and damaging the homes that are immediately landward of that dune feature. It's a key element of the project. The actual project itself in two thousand and six, almost three million cubic yards of sand, it's a lot of sand, over almost twenty-two hundred feet of beach. The total construction cost was over nineteen million, almost twenty million dollars, and much of that money came from, from the state. Subsequent to that, after some storms, we knew the, the ends of the project would be susceptible. The National Seashore folks to the west didn't allow us to put any sand in there, so the very west end of the project area eroded somewhat, and after two thousand and nine, with some funding from FEMA, the county was able to truck in some sand to repair that west end of the project, which was graded, restored some of the dune that was out there, and then subsequently planted with vegetation that, in order to protect that dune feature. But again, that west end has, has eroded. But if we look at the project performance overall, we've seen that the project has, has done pretty well. There's some hotspots at the ends, at the east and west ends of the project, where we've lost some significant portions of the dune itself. Overall, compared to what was constructed in two thousand and six, on average, we've, the shorelines moved about seventy-two feet landward. We expected that, much of that retreat, but on average, it's working much better than, than expected, and, and we had initially in the planning before the, the construction in two thousand and six, we expected we would have to come back in twenty fourteen and put some more sand on the beach in order to maintain the beach, and that's why I'm here today, is it's, it's time to do that. Now, the project has performed pretty well, not only after the initial project, the American Shore and Beach Preservation Association awarded Navar Beach one of the best beaches in the country, but most recently, in two thousand and twelve, ASBPA recognized Navar Beach as one of the best of the best in the whole country, and in fact, the, in the voting that occurred in two thousand and twelve, Navar Beach got more votes than any other community beach in the country. And in March, I will, on behalf of the county, accept an award for the county for that project. As an indicator of the economic impact of, of the Navar Beach project, I've obtained some information from Kate Wilks over at TDC that shows the effects of the storms that occurred in two thousand and four and two thousand and five, where tourist development tax revenue from Navar Beach dropped in that timeframe. Keep in mind that the, the project construction was completed in November two thousand and six, but it actually started during the summer of two thousand and six, but certainly by two thousand and seven beyond, we could see some recovery in tourist development tax revenue. The Deepwater Horizon oil spill put a damper in that, but Navar Beach is on the, on the rebound again, and then generating some significant tax revenue for the county. So as we look to re-nourishment, what are our goals and objectives? We certainly want to mitigate the ongoing erosion. We want to provide protection to those, those homes that, and buildings and condominiums that exist immediately landward of the dune, that front the Gulf and even further landward. We want to enhance recreation. We want to provide some beaches for people to put their towel down and enjoy the beach. Ultimately, we want to protect the natural resources that exist along the beach, and turtle sea turtle habitat, and bird habitat, and foraging habitat, et cetera. We actually look at the project design, and this is, this is the preliminary design, and this is the snapshot just north of the pier. You can see the red two oh nine, that's a reference monument just, I'm just going to write just to the west of the pier, that here, we're looking to build the shoreline back out, and here, you can see the little, little shading in there, that most of the dune remains intact. It's done pretty well in this project area, in this area of the project. And we look specifically at the cross-section in there, the, we can see that we're largely building just the berm back out in, in the vicinity of the pier. The, the dune itself is held up pretty well there, and we're just going to have to put some sand back out in front of it to protect that dune and maintain the, the beach that is desirable. On the other hand, if we look at the west end, not only do we have to put that sand out in front, but we still, we need to go back and, and repair some of that dune. And I'll note that in, in total, we're expecting to put about a million cubic yards of sand out there, and as I noticed early in two thousand and six, we put almost three million cubic yards of sand. In general, as time goes on and future maintenance may be undertaken, expected on about eight-year intervals, we expect the quantity of sand to go down as this material spreads throughout the system and becomes more stable. But based on the preliminary design, and this is based on surveys that were performed in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, we're looking at about an eight-and-a-half million dollar construction cost for the project. The potential funding sources that we're envisioning, that there's the National Resources, Natural Resources Disaster Assistance Program that may generate some funding, that's still out there to be sorted out. There's always the potential for state funding, but at this point, state funding is looking pretty thin. The county certainly has the opportunity to use general revenue or tourist development tax revenue, or, as we did for the initial project, use MSBU. And in fact, in the two thousand and six project, the total project cost was, again, almost twenty million, but the local share of cost, distributed to the beachfront property owners, the leaseholders, was only about a little over seven million. The benefit zones were broken out, and there were points awarded for each, each category of property in order to generate the local share of cost needed to implement the project. Ultimately, to, to move forward with construction, to re-nourish and maintain the beach, we have to prepare and submit permit applications to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and the Army Corps of Engineers for permits. We need to then finalize the design, prepare the contract documents, and then seek bids and award a construction contract before the county can be ready to go. The probable cost is, we've outlined, for not only the final design, the permitting, but also there's just some post-construction monitoring that'll be required for the, any, any beachfield project in Florida. We've estimated that it's going to be about a little over a million dollars, about one point three, and then the total project cost, by the time we put in a construction, in over, prepare some dune overwalks, some turtle monitoring that county's undertaken, some other things we'll have to do, we're looking roughly about a ten million dollar project in order to account for those direct costs. At this point, we recommend that the board authorize us to proceed with the permitting and the final design. We've provided a proposal to county staff, and then ultimately, we would ask that the county identify, it's appropriate to identify the funding sources that would be proposed to be used to construct the project, and that might include that we formulate a new MSBU with county staff. that might include that we formulate a new MSBU with county staff as you deem appropriate. And with that, I thank you for your attention, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we back up a couple screens to some of the cost analysis? All right. Went through that kind of fast. Was that the last screen, or I think the one just prior to that? We had two cost screens back to back there, right towards the end. The one that had... Back up. Okay, you're not giving me time to look at this thing even. Stick it up there. Let me see what I'm looking at before I... Okay, this is a three-year estimate of 10 million. Say, let's say 10 million bucks.
This would include the construction and the monitoring, some of which the county has looked for us to undertake, some of which county staff have overseen, but these are what we expect to be...
Okay, we now have a turtle sanctuary being developed on Navar Beach with Commissioner Melvin's assistance. It looks like that's moving forward pretty quick. $54,000, who would be doing that turtle monitoring?
We've been monitoring turtles on Navar Beach for the last, since 95.
Okay, so...
So we contract with a licensed turtle monitor for every day of the turtle season someone's on that beach monitoring it. And we had to do that during the last re-nourishment project as well.
Okay. I'd like to explore, and if I have support of the board, I'd like to explore our new turtle sanctuary folks absorbing some of that, some of those duties. They may be out of their purview, but I think it's something that, you know, if we could curtail some of that $54,000 and put some of it back into that, you know, that program, I'd like to see us consider that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. I'd made myself very similar note. This post-construction turtle monitoring, is that in addition to the monitoring that's required by the state that we do now? Is this a layer of monitoring on top of our normal monitoring, or are we double counting the cost?
I would defer to Mr. Blaylock to answer that question. My understanding is that probably the monitoring you're doing now fulfills most, if not all, of the requirements that are posed by the permit that we expect from the state.
So those are dollars...
That's my expectation. Is that a fair...
That is correct, plus any of the reporting that we have to do for turtle takes during the process. There was, as you know, quite a bit, or maybe you didn't know, but we had a work stoppage as a result of turtle takes, and that involved, and that came out of that monitoring. So we had to report all that. But the answer is, we will pay annually whether it is included in our project or out of the...
So that's actually just a buffer cost?
That's actually his estimated cost of the turtle monitoring.
Well, we spend, we monitor turtles 365 days a year, and that's a budget item already. This is not an additional layer of monitoring. So this is just a buffer right now?
We're identifying costs...
And that is only one-half of 1% of the project cost. I don't think we need to get too lost in the weeds.
I was just answering the question. That's not an additional layer of monitoring, that's just...
That's correct. It is, you indicated it appears to be in other elements of the county's budget.
Can we go back to the screen on just the cost of this portion of the project instead of the three-year, the current project we're speaking of?
That is, that is the current project. The three years is just the post-construction monitoring. The professional fees, project construction, dune overwalk, permit, tilling and escarpment, all of that is the project cost. The three-year monitoring is essentially the project, the monitoring, the construction for additional sand movement, and then the turtle monitoring, which is 54,000. So that's a small part of it. The $8 million plus another, you know, close to $10 million is the initial project cost, construction cost. Don't get lost by the three years post-construction. That's not a three-year, it's not like $3 million a year for three years. That's just one of the items in here.
Okay, now I guess that's what's got me confused, that this would be, if we executed it this year, this would be what we'd be looking at at the end of three years.
No, this would be the cost to construct and carry you through the three years. There's going to be additional post-construction monitoring beyond the three-year period because you're still going to be doing sand surveys out in years four, five, six, and seven until it's time to begin the process anew.
That's correct. Typically, though, the state permits as they are currently being issued require heavy monitoring for the first three years, and then they allow to skip years thereafter. So it's not as intense after the third year.
All right. Can we still go back to that prior screen?
Sure.
Why, okay, and this would be done, or expected to be done in this next fiscal year? This portion of it? I guess I'm getting lost in doing what?
At this point, I expect that Part One services might be completed within the next year. In essence, we think once we file the permit applications with the state and the Corps, it's going to take close to a year for us to get those permits. And in order to be ready to go in 2014, we need to begin that process now.
Okay. Okay, so are you saying then, I'm still lost in the timeline here. If Part One is the next fiscal year, then what are we talking about Part Two, Three, and Four?
Part Two and Three and Four would be roughly, we would be in a position to start those processes, Part Two, Part Three, and Four roughly in a year from now, or a year after the permit applications are submitted. That's our expectation.
Okay. All right. And I know a lot of these things are small portions of it, but I'm easily confused, but I feel like our constituents, if we're going to be asking them for an MSBU, they may have some of the same questions, so. And then I'll turn to Commissioner Lynchard. Are we, can Pete be tapped for this stuff?
Perhaps. This was, this was one of our initial NERDA submissions, was Navar Beach Restoration. That has not, you know, NERDA is a slow process. They've only awarded very few projects under NERDA. This is the initial round of NERDA funding as well. There was $100 million allocated to the state of Florida. There's more coming in the out-years, once the damage is assessed and levied. But that's the question that really, all this boils down to is 5B, Recommended Board Action, Identify Funding Source. Because if we don't have a funding source, you know, there's no point in moving forward. Our funding sources are NERDA, that's a possible. It could be, it could come this year, it could come three or four years from now. An MSBU, which we would direct Coastal Tech to formulate a new MSBU based on the current estimate. And the county has taken on a larger share of the beach since the old MSBU was done because the county park out there was still owned by the state.
That's correct.
The last MSBU was developed. So the county's going to have a larger portion of any new MSBU out there. People have talked about Restore as a potential funding source. Again, those are dollars that we don't have yet. Restore, you know, developing our multi-year implementation plan, we don't know if that would be an eligible project for us, or one that we want to pursue. Again, Restore is one-time money. This is a recurring expense. Every seven, eight, nine, 10 years, we're going to have this expense. We only get Restore dollars one time. So NERDA, I think, is a different animal because that's strictly earmarked for environmental projects such as beach restoration, human use components. So I think NERDA is a more viable funding source. Whether or not it turns out to be one that we're actually going to see is another question. And we don't know that. You know, we don't have that crystal ball that would make it easy. So we need to, we need to identify a funding source. Is it going to come out of the general revenue of the county? Can the county afford to spend $10 million every eight years out of the general fund? Or is it going to come out of an MSBU, the property owners on the beach, including the county for a large portion, fund beach re-nourishment? Because if it's, if it comes out of the general fund, you know, everybody in the county's paying for the re-nourishment of the beachfront property. So, or do we wait and see what happens with NERDA and Restore? And how long can we wait?
Thank you, appreciate that. That helps me a lot.
I guess what we were thinking is, and again, it obviously is up to the board, as it always is, Roger, go back to, I'm like Bob, you kind of have a flashback or something here. Roger, go back to when it breaks out, is regardless of the funding source, certainly we're going to, it seems prudent to me to go ahead and authorize Part One. We're going to need to know, we're going to need to know what the costs are, we're going to need to know, and there's no other source of revenue for that other than general fund dollars. If we're going to be ready for NERDA, I don't think we can wait till we get NERDA and then start, start the design and the permitting process. I guess this was, this was trying to get us started. I'm not sure I know what the answer, the final answer is, but we've got to get started, it seems like to me, sooner rather than later. I mean, because of the permitting timeframes and design timeframes, and just the magnitude of the money.
Right, and I'll ask board members to give me some direction for Thursday, what we'd expect from staff, suggestions or recommendations by Thursday.
And again, it could be a two-pronged approach. We could task them with kicking off Part One and developing funding source mechanisms, be it an MSBU, NERDA, what have.
Okay. If you'd like to place that warning, or...
We're much more than aware.
Okay. So we'll move this subject without objection to Thursday's agenda, and I do have, before I close it out, we got a comment?
Robert Cooley, 8271 Guff Boulevard. I'm hoping that we're going to be able to get BP or NERDA or somebody to pay the major part of this. That's what, in all of our interests. I remember a discussion with the board several months ago, and there was a lot of discussion and a thought and understanding on your part, that the beach is enjoyed by people from throughout the county, not just the people who live on the beach, and that certainly a portion of this re-nourishment should be borne by the general population or the general citizens of San Ros County. So I hope we keep that in mind, and it's not just a burden that comes on the people who happen to live on the beach.
And I would, I would agree with that, but I think there would be a matrix just like there is from Gulffront property to north of the Gulffront property, as you, and that could, that may not be fair either, but we, it's something we certainly need to address. Thank you.
I mean, as far as I know, most of the counties in Florida, the county pays, or somebody pays, it's not just the people who happen to be on the beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, staff has direction from the board, so I'll move this conversation to Thursday's agenda and do so without objection. And at this time, we'll go to the engineers' report. Let me ask the board if you want to finish out today's agenda before lunch. Okay. Anybody need to take a break? Okay. Any break? Okay. All right, we'll go with it. Mr. Engineer, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our discussion is, we have a group from Central Elementary School, third grader, asking through the Soul and Conjuration District folks to plant an area of sea oats. We've done this a number of times, and each time we bring, come to the board asking permission. And Terry Wallace and I designate an area, and they come out with donated plants and have a field day planting sea oats on the public beaches of Navar Beach, and we'd ask permission again this time.
Okay. I think it's a great idea. We'll move it to Thursday's agenda without objection. Item number two, Mr. Blaylock.
Item number two is a final plat that could come before the board on Thursday.
Okay.
And that includes the engineer's report.
And I failed to mention it earlier, but I have one item I'd like to add to engineering, and this is just some direction I'd like to ask Mr. Blaylock to go in, and that would be sometime, not by Thursday, but by the following meeting date, prepare a discussion of the value to the county on our outsourcing of recycling and the percentage that we've grown since we went to the, of recycling that we've grown to since we did the franchise areas. And I'd like to include in that both the savings and the income to the county.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Blaylock, item number two, discussion of the plat for Riverview. You say you're going to defer that, does the discussion to Thursday, so we're not going to act on it Thursday, we're going to talk about it Thursday?
Yeah, if they meet all the requirements that we have, what happens? We put this on as a placeholder, letting you know that these items are in the hopper and could have everything complete. No, sir, Thursday, you would actually act on it, or it will not be on the agenda.
We haven't seen it yet, though. Have we? Have we seen the, we haven't seen what you're proposing for us to vote on Thursday. We normally get a look at it on Monday, beat it around, have time to ask staff questions if we have questions, et cetera. You're going to give us this plat Thursday and want us to deal with it Thursday, is that correct? I just want to be sure I understand.
Yes. And typically, we add these on, and if a commissioner on Monday asks to see the plat, we'll make a plat available to him.
I'd like to see a plat.
Yes.
Okay. Noting comments and questions, I'll move item two to Thursday, and I'll move item three to the following meeting dates. So without objection, hearing none, it passes. Okay, at this time, we'll hear from Public Service Committee, Commissioner Lynchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is discussion of purchase of three E911 recorders at the lowest quoted price of $78,027. Unless there's any discussion, I'll move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item two is discussion of land development code or LDC review and revisions. This is something that we've talked about, seems like every few meetings in the past, reviewing our land development code. I met with Mr. Gomilian to talk about it. We talked, a couple of different ways we could approach an LDC review, and that would be internally, as your backup demo points out, or hiring an external consultant. I would, I would rather see it done in a more informal, internal basis. Mr. Gomilian and I discussed perhaps preparing a survey for developers and owners of recently closed-out projects, you know, looking back, asking them how the experience was, if there are any changes that they would like to see, either in the process or the land development code itself. Mr. Gomilian already has a survey of some sorts that he sends out to people. Do you want to talk about that, Tony?
Sure, as a part of our, maybe not a final step, but one of the steps we implemented over the past year with our project management was the post-construction survey. And that goes out and reaches the, out to the owner after the dust settles, and essentially asks them, are there things, how did it go, and are there things that you would like to comment on? So if you chose or desired for us to tailor something specifically language-wise relative to soliciting input on the code, land development code, certainly they would have that opportunity now, but we could, we could take suggestions on what you might like for them to be asked in that survey. We have the mechanism, so if you chose to utilize that, we can utilize it.
Commissioner Melvin?
Yeah, that wouldn't preclude commissioner input, because I have a load of suggestions. It needs to be much more user-friendly and much more business-friendly. What we need in San Ros County is more jobs, and there's subtle changes that can be made that come, you know, that would comply with the spirit of what we're trying to do in terms of maintaining the environment and the ecology, and also make it more business-friendly. And I have a list of those things I'd be happy to share.
And I think, I think that's something that we can do as a board. If you have, if you have suggestions, or any commissioner has suggestions, we can bring that up at one of our planning and zoning meetings and discuss it, and then kick it back... one of our planning and zoning meetings, and discuss it, and then kick it back down to the zoning board if we choose. I think that might be a more useful process. If you, if there's an issue that you know of, that you've had an associate, or a client, or a friend tell you they had a specific problem, bring those to the board. Let's don't wait for any kind of internal review. Let's go ahead and get them out there and talk about them. Most of the time, when I hear a complaint about the development process and call Tony or Becky, at the end of the day, it's not really a problem with our code. It's a problem with... There's some external factor that is creating it. It's not the fact that our code is too onerous. A lot of times, it's a misunderstanding on the part of the developer, or a problem with the state codes that we can't do anything about anyway. So it's something that's outside of our purview.
One of the things that I've wrote in... Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Go ahead. My feelings exactly on this, you know, when I read this from Becky in the limited time and not being able to service others well, I don't see any reason to break out the land development code and go from page one to the whole way through it. And I like the suggestion, and I was going to make the same, that we identify those problems, bring them to staff. And I think two of the biggest ones. One is the vacant properties on our island that we need to decide, because, you know, everything's changed, you know, from when we did that. So I think that's one of the issues that need to, you know, we really need to take a hard look at. But another one has become very evident as you drive down the road, is the tree planting ordinance. You know, we've got trees now, and it was a great idea, I just think we kind of missed target on it when we did it, because we've now got oak trees growing up in the powerlines, blocking signage, blocking signage. And I would like the board to think about it over the next few days, because I think I think we may need to, you know, until we can work through this, maybe even put a moratorium on the tree planting part of a building of business, or whatever, on, say, the first 50 feet of your property. I would think if I'm building a nice restaurant or a nice facility, I'm going to want that to... I don't have to be told to make it look pretty out there. I could do that on my own. But yet, by ordinance, we've caused some plantings of trees that are going to become a problem. And I don't know how else to address it, so we don't continue that problem until we get through this review of the LDC.
Well, one way would be simply to put some ands and ors and commas in it, so that we don't require a tree. If you have a commercial place in a brand-new business, you can, we can ask for a shrub that'll be no higher than three feet. That'll be decorative, it'll be attractive, but you won't block the public's view of your... And the list goes on and on and on. And I know it's a problem in a rural county like we live in, but when we change a zoning regulation, it's not retroactive. So if I come and build right next to you, they're going to make me do things that you don't have to do, but you didn't have to do it because you've been here. But I'm new, so I have to comply. And that generates an awful lot of heartburn, especially in the Southland, where we're experiencing growth, where we're experiencing people coming in, and it looks like cronyism, frankly. I've had that thrown at me several times, that you're taking care of the homeboys and making me, you know, spend money. So those are things that we need to look at as we review this.
And certainly, you know, the intent when we did this was well-meaning, but it's something that just need... We've got to sharpen our pencil and go back to the board on it. Thank you.
Okay. So this is really nothing that we need to leave on for Thursday, then. I think we understand that if there are any particular provisions of the land development code that we want to address, then we'll do that as a board, you know, bring it up with Ms. Cato or Mr. Gomillion, then we'll discuss it at a future zoning hearing. Item number three is discussion of ship second mortgage subordination request for the property located at 6507 Bonner Avenue in Milton. Unless there are any questions or discussion, I'll move this to Thursday without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item four, discussion of ship second mortgage subordination request for the property located at 5775 Hickory Street in Milton. Unless there's any discussion, I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Cole. That completes Public Services.
Thank you, Commissioner Lynchard. At this time, we'll do Public Works, Commissioner Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have six items today. The first item, discussion of a year extension of agreement with Contact Engineered Solutions LLC for corrugated aluminum culvert pipe, and this is just an extension of the existing contract, and I recommend we move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item two, discussion of request for a three-way stop intersection at Turkey Bluff Road and Turkey Creek Drive. Mr. Whitfield.
Yes, this is one we've looked at. You've got the information where we actually took a telephone poll, and results were pretty even, for and against, but some of the residents in the areas strongly feel like it's needed, and so Public Works doesn't have any opposition if the board wants to go forward with this.
Any other discussion? If not, I recommend we move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item three is discussion of request from the Hollyby and Sea Homeowners Association for additional multiway stops throughout the subdivision. We've background on this also, and this comes from the homeowners' association, and there's a list of all the areas that they want these. Mr. Whitfield, are there any problem with that?
No, we don't see a problem with it. This is really part two of this issue that came before the board a few meetings back, when Sheriff Hall agreed to increase enforcement, which he did, I think with good results, but the homeowners' association feels like that next step is needed to provide these multiway stops. It's actually 16 locations, 16 intersections, but that's throughout Hollyby and the Sea, which is a large subdivision, and again, we certainly don't oppose doing this.
Any other discussion? If not, I recommend we move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item four is discussion of construction of a left-turn lane on Shamuckl Highway, County Road 197, at the intersection of Wallace Lake Road, at an estimated cost of $75,000 to be funded with a $10,000 contribution from Southland Builders Incorporated, and $65,000 from the franchise fees for road and drainage. And this is a safety enhancement project, according to Public Works, and I would recommend we move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item five is discussion of construction of a left-turn lane on Shamuckl Highway, County Road 197, at the intersection of Willard-Nars Road, County Road 191, at an estimated cost of $75,000 to be funded from franchise fees for road and drainage, and this also is a safety enhancement project, and I recommend we move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
And the last item today is discussion of encroachment in the county's drainage easement on Lot 7, Block 1 of Somerset Estates, first edition. I think we've seen some paperwork from Mr. Whitfield on that, but I'll let him expound on that.
We're continuing discussions with D.R. Horton Homes regarding this, and even as of this morning, we've had a conversation with them. And it looks like where we're at, they don't have a representative here today. I think they will have a representative at Thursday's meeting, so we would like to keep it on the move at two Thursday's meeting agenda. And basically, what we have is they have an encroachment. D.R. Horton Homes has an encroachment on a county-maintained drainage easement. They have a covered porch that was built out onto the drainage easement. And we have a couple of issues that are going on there, related issues. One is they had installed some undersized culvert pipe in that drainage easement behind three or four of the lots, and we're working with them to have those pipes either removed or upgraded to the appropriate-sized pipe, one or the other. I think they're in agreement to have that done. And then the second thing is, we don't have a good access easement to the drainage easement, and we're working with them to obtain that. I think I put in the memo that perhaps Lot 7, and I gave you an aerial map where I kind of wrote in the lot numbers and what have you, and I don't think Lot 7 is going to be the one we end up with. I think they're leaning more towards Lot 10, which they don't currently own, but they do have a contract to buy from the original developer. And so what we... Either we would get that access easement we need from the original developer prior to the sale, or from D.R. Horton Homes afterwards, is what we're trying to work out. So essentially, I think where we're at is, our recommendation would be on Thursday to grant an encroachment agreement, if that works for them. If, in talking to Ms. Jones, hopefully, that'll work for them. Grant an encroachment agreement contingent upon the undersized pipe problem being resolved, as well as providing the county a access easement.
Yes, sir. Would you like to speak to this?
I just wanted...
If you would, just mash the speaker button and give your name and address with the record, please.
Bob Rasmussen, Representative for D.R. Woods.
Just wanted to make myself available for any questions.
Okay.
And I'm on track with... I think we're all in agreement that we're going to try to accomplish the things I've discussed here as far as removal of the undersized pipe and granting of the access easement.
That's correct.
Yes. So that would be our recommendation for Thursday, is provide them what they need as far as the encroachment agreement contingent upon them providing us what we need.
Do you have any problem with that?
It'll be here Thursday.
Thank you. I recommend we move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll turn now to Budget and Finance, Commissioner Melvin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have 11 items to deal with. Item number one is discussion of bids received for a home substantial rehabilitation project located at 6241 Fox Run Street in Milton. The low bidder meeting specifications disguise our siding and construction incorporated with a bid of $10,725. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number two is going to get a preamble before we generate some confusion. For those listening at home, and those that may be here reporting, Santa Rosa County has not reinstated the impact fee. The impact funds we're fixing to discuss are old impact funds that are still in the pipeline. Item number two is discussion of budget amendment 2013-79 in the amount of $3,461,783. This will carry forward impact fee fund balances and distribute them as follows. $320,545 will go into Area 1 reserves, that's the north end of the county. 500... Correction, $56,772 into Area 2 reserves, which is the central portion of the county. $3,080, $3,088,771 go into Area 3 reserves, and $3,599 go into admin reserves. And these funds are distributed in accordance with a formula that stipulates that they are spent in the area that they're raised in. So the people that paid impact fees in Area 1 only have their fees expended, and et cetera. This is... These monies impacted was raised in Area 1, and we're moving it to Area 1's budget. It was raised in Area 2, and we're moving it to Area 2's budget. And Area 3, and we're moving it to Area 3's budget. And the remaining $3,599, we're moving to admin reserves. And I'd move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number three is discussion of budget amendment 2013-80 in the amount of $208,898, which will recognize federal home program grant and allocate to substantial housing account and the first-time buyer account in the general fund, and I recommend approval without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number four is discussion of budget amendment 2013-81 in the amount of $8,500, which will carry forward fund... Carry forward to reimburse the landfill enterprise fund for an invoice paid on behalf of Planning and Zoning Department in the general fund. And I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number five is discussion of budget amendment 2013-82 in the amount of $43,750, which will fund signage and replacement signage, and I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number six is discussion of budget amendment 2013-83 in the amount of $15,250, which will fund the agreement between Santa Rosa County and Contact Intelligence dot com Incorporated for executive recruitment services for the Director of Economic Development in the general fund. And I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number seven is discussion of budget amendment 2013-84 in the amount of $69,250, which will fund the installation of covered drainage system across private property adjacent to Woodbine Road from Area 2 impact fees. And unless there are questions, I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number eight is discussion of budget amendment 2013-85 in the amount of $8,990, which will fund the change order with Vision Construction Incorporated for the construction of the Pace Community Center. These funds will be coming from District 1 and District 2 Recreation Project Fund reserves. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number nine is discussion of budget amendment 2013-86 in the amount of $155,410, which will fund safety upgrades at US 90 and East Spencer Field Road intersections, coming from the electric franchise fee fund, road and bridge reserves. And I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number 10 is discussion of the budget amendment 2013-87 in the amount of $57,910, which will carry forward unspent funds in the general fund for the purchase of replacements for the self-checkout units from the present vendor, Invision Ware, at five libraries as approved by the August 23, 2012 Commission Regular Meeting. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Hearing none, it passes.
Item number 11 is discussion of county expenditures and check register, and I haven't completed that, but I have it on your desk and signed by Thursday morning, Mr. Chairman. I recommend we move this item to Thursday without objection.
Thank you. And hearing none, it passes. Any further comments from board members, staff, general public? Seeing none, we adjourn.